Just got number nine.
Very good. And I just want to do a sound check or two while we're working. Do we know that Flow and Council and staff are all curable and potentially visible?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Alex here as well.
Good number.
David, is my sound good?
It is, Marguerite. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Here I am.
There we go. Perfect.
I'm gonna be here. I'm just taking off the video.
Great. Be right back.
I'm up to 11. Missing Krugliak, Russ and Serbin.
For yesterday, I think Commissioner Krugliak is going to be joining us later. Who else? Commissioner Serbin and?
Russ.
Okay. All right, well, we'll go ahead and get started and hopefully they can join. As soon as available.
Hello, this is Sonia, testing my audio and video.
We can see you and hear you, Sonia. Commissioner Diaz, I should say. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. So David, if you think we're good, I'm going to go ahead and call us to order.
We have a court.
Very good. So noting that the time is 10:03. And recalling what I found the most, the single most useful, or at least the comment from the youngest commentator yesterday. Hi! That got me through the evening. I'll call this continued meeting in order. Welcome and thank you fellow commissioners and members of the public for joining us once again for this continued special meeting of the County of San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission. Let me turn now to the IRC clerk, David Hall, to provide additional information about today's meeting. David?
Thank you, Chair Bame. I'd like to make clear to the public, first of all, that public testimony during the draft map public hearing has concluded and that non-agenda public comment is not scheduled for today's special meeting. There are however many ways to communicate with the commission and I would invite members of the public interested in doing so to visit drawyourcommunity.com. On that note, in addition to the approximately 190 public speakers last night, the meeting, after the meeting began, the commission received 200 additional ecomments, 28 emails, two letters, for an additional 230 contacts. Those contacts have been or will be distributed to the commission and posted online. The log of correspondence received, including comments that have been submitted to the community builder tool, has been updated and provided to the commissioners and is posted on the IRC website. Correspondence received is posted on the website with today's meeting materials and the commission's logs, the log of ex parte communications has been updated on the IRC website. Chair Bame?
Thank you very much, David. Would you please call the roll for this continued session?
Thank you. Before I call the roll, I'd like to note for the record that all commissioners are participating via teleconference and as such, all votes will be handled by a roll called vote. I'll ask the commissioners to say here or present when called upon. Chair Bame?
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina?
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Chen?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Dostal?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Inman?
Here.
Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Pons?
Yeah.
Commissioner Russ? Commissioner Serbin? With 11 commissioners present, there is a quorum, Chair Bame.
I'm present.
No, Commissioner Serbin is present. There are 12 commissioners present. Chair Bame?
Oh, and this is Barbara. Commissioner Russ is having a little bit of trouble logging on, so I'm helping him right now. He should be on shortly. Thank you.
Right, we have 13 commissioners present.
Very good. And thank you, Barbara, for that. David, when Commissioner Russ joins us, if you can make sure we've noted it for the record, that'd be excellent. All right, so. I don't want to spend a lot of time on the introduction, but I want to at least let commissioners know what the plan we have is, including the officers who are going to run a part of this morning's discussion. So that you can plan according. We will first hear from Flow Analytics to recap the presentation of draft IRC maps and public maps from yesterday. I'll ask Alex and John to do so in a rather expedited way, but allow commissioners to ask questions or make sure they have any highlights that they wanted. Without discussion, just to make sure we've covered everything that commissioners want. We'll also look for Flow Analytics to provide the COI update that they traditionally provide as part of the opening presentation. After that, I may turn to council just to provide a brief opportunity to review any pending issues, including the issue that was raised last night. Again, that will be commissioner-driven. I'd like to keep that to no more than five minutes or so, but if commissioners have something that they think they need to clarify with council, I'd like to take the time to do that then. Welcome, Commissioner Russ. So after that, we'll go, and this will be, if I'm doing my math right, around 10:30, 10:40, we'll turn to two hours of thematic discussion. With a half hour each, roughly, on North County, East County, South County, and Central County. That is not meant to be a restrictive conversation. That is meant to be a guided and effective conversation. And since the co-vice chairs will explain that much better than I can, when we get to that part, I'll turn to them to explain that in more detail when we get there, and they will alternate in leading that discussion. After that thematic discussion, we may review where we are, make sure that any work that needs to be done over lunch break is being done, and then take a break for lunch, probably around 12:45. At this point, I'd like to plan lunch for about a half hour. But again, we'll see where we are and how we're doing. After that, we'll review where we are and make sure we understand the process for the afternoon. Any questions about that? Commissioner Diaz?
Yes, Chair, thank you. And thank you for scheduling lunch and keeping us in mind of our wellbeing. I wanted to, it's just to understand the rationale for separating the themes geographically. If you could explain the reasoning for that, because I would propose to just kind of think a little bit out of the box and focus on communities of interest, but maybe you could just explain a little more.
I'll explain it briefly now because we can reserve time to discuss it before we start the actual conversation. And I'm very sorry, I didn't mention Commissioner's statements. My mistake. But on that specific point, Commissioner Diaz, in effect, you answered the question. We could do it any numbers, number of ways, based on communities of interest, based on population figures, based on RPV analysis. It seemed easiest for the most open possible conversation to use geography because that by definition covers all of it. But if commissioners have a better idea, or more importantly, if you want to take the conversation in a certain direction, I'm sure the co-vice chairs for those particular themes would be happy to do so. And we don't have to use the same structure in each of those four conversations. If we end up having a COI-based conversation for one part of the county and an RPV-based conversation for another part, that's perfectly fine. I just don't want to spend a lot of time sorting that out. I'd rather get on to the thematic discussion. That give you the initial reply. And again, we can talk about it a little more later. Okay. Commissioner Larson?
Yes, thank you. I have no problem with a geographic orientation for our decision process. However, you got to remember there's a coastal district, and that's an important part of the county, and we're a community of interest as well. And I would resent, including the coastal district, is part of a more broad central district, which is kind of an undefined area. So I would suggest we have five different districts to correspond to the current five supervisory districts. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that, Commissioner Larson. I'll ask you to hold that thought in mind because right now the plan would be to do the three other segments of the county first, north, east, south, and we could have a conversation about that. Let me just, before I turn to Commissioner Hansen and Commissioner Serbin, let me just remind, and I'm very sorry I didn't mention this. After the initial presentations by Flow and Council, we'll have Commissioner's statements. Those statements are offered as a way for each of us to hear where each of us are. They should include ideally an expression of preference for which map, 13A or 14, you would like to work from. I know that there are some strong feelings about how long those statements should be, but after talking to the officers again this morning, we're going to have one minute time limit on it. We are going to display the clock. I'm going to ask the clerk to remind commissioners when they're approaching the end of their time, and I'm fully confident that commissioners will be able to make their additional points as we go along. That's where we are right now, and that I really don't want to spend time discussing at this point. So we do Flow and Council, then Commissioner's statements. And then we'll transition into thematic discussion, but, and this is an important, but if we are at a point where it sounds like a majority of commissioners or even a consensus of commissioners are leaning towards one map, we may consider whether to make a decision right then to work from one map. I just want to let commissioners know that's a possibility based on expressions, preferences expressed. Before I go on, let me just check with the co-vice chairs. Am I forgetting anything else besides Commissioner's statements? Okay. Good. Good. So Commissioner Hansen and Commissioner Serbin?
I wanted to ask more about the Commissioner's statements. You've answered that question. And I also concur with Commissioner Larson and others who have expressed a wish to discuss five areas, which will help us translate into five district decisions. That's it.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Serbin?
How will we determine the order in which we discuss these themes? The reason why I'm asking that is because the first theme that we discuss will give us the most flexibility, and once we get to the last theme, if we've arrived at agreements based on those other four themes, that last theme will have the least flexibility.
Let me, I have a different perspective, and I think the officers too, too, but let me leave that for discussion as we move into thematic discussion, as into the thematic discussion. Because I want to give the co-vice chairs time to explain how they intend to run that and how the wrap-up step will work at the end of each discussion. So not seeing any other requests for the floor. I will turn to Flow Analytics to recap what was presented yesterday and add an update on community of interest input. Alex, John, the floor is yours.
Sure. I am going to start, and I will just share my screen briefly to overview the public maps that were submitted and that we presented yesterday. Sure, I have this. Very good. Believe everybody now sees my screen. So this is public map 11. District one. Two, three, district four, district five, then overall deviation of 5.6%. This is publicly submitted map number 12. Once again, these are the ones that we did show last night.
John, could you, John, could you leave it on that general map, the top map, just for a minute, please? I want to point out to commissioners that this is very much like the IRC map 11, which was the genesis for IRC map 13. So I wanted to point that out, that this was very, very similar. There were some good changes actually to it. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you, John.
And this is district one. District two. District three, four. And five. Public map 13.
All right, can you slow down the scrolling? It's a little.
Okay, I was, yeah, I was trying to go through it briefly, but I can slow down a bit. So this is public map 13.
John, could we pause on the cover for map 13? Because I just wanted to mention, at least one commissioner was wondering if this map had been submitted as a formal submission because they had seen it offered in public comment. And we've now confirmed this is a map that was submitted in public comment. But that was of interest to that commissioner. So as far as I know right now, all the outstanding questions we have from commissioners about whether a public map has been processed by Flow have been answered. We, I think we have them all with possibly one exception that came in very late yesterday. I'll let John and Alex address that.
And by the way, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but for me, it'd be more useful just to stay on this map longer, on the overall, going to each individual district, you go through so fast, it doesn't really help me much.
Yeah, I would agree with that too, John. Okay. Let me, before John goes on, let me just ask commissioners. Do you want to pause for brief clarifying questions? Because we don't want to, our structure is not to discuss maps at this point. But if you, if it's, is it a question of just having more time to look at it, or is it something you want to ask about?
Just, it's just more helpful to look at this while he's telling us the statistics rather than go to each individual district, which just doesn't help very much, in my view.
And in order to do that, I would ask if Alex maybe can also pull up the statistics and I'll leave them on my screen, because otherwise I don't have them in the right place, at least not set up for right now. So Alex, is that something you could help me out with?
Yep, pulling up the stats now so I can say that while you keep your screen shared on the overall map. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah, I'll keep my screen on the overall map, and if you can read through the statistics.
Right. So you're on publicly submitted map 13, and the stats for that, just scrolling to them now. That has an overall deviation of 2.7%. If there are other stats you guys would like to know.
Alex, I think that's probably a good model. Let's, let's mention the overall deviation, and then if commissioners have more specific data questions they want to bring out, they can ask them. And commissioners, do we need to go back to the two maps John's already shown? And do the same thing. Okay. So John, can we rewind? Just put the main public map 11 on, give, let's give five to 10 seconds, and Alex can cite the deviation as well as any other highlight that needs to be mentioned.
Yep. So the overall deviation of this map is 5.6%. No other, the only other pertinent information on this one is it's actually not contiguous. And that's due to the connection between Coronado and the rest of District Three. Okay, and now we're gonna go to 12. All right, so 12 has an overall deviation of 6.2%. And the same issue occurs here with the contiguity criterion. Coronado is not connected to District Four, with the rest of District Four. Okay, we saw 13, so now John's showing 14. The overall deviation for 14 is 13.1%. So as John mentioned last night, what we'll see next, publicly submitted map 15, is a correction.
Let's just scroll ahead.
Right. So this 15 was an improvement of 14 to better balanced population. And the result of that work by this emitter was an overall deviation of 7.3%. And this one is contiguous. The way they connected Coronado with District Four included a piece of downtown with the ferry. Actually, it might have even been the bridge. If we need to look at that individual map, we can, but this one is contiguous.
And then I'll just note, this is the map that Chair Bame referenced. We received this at 4:30 PM Pacific time yesterday. So we did not notice it prior, getting ready for yesterday's meeting. I found it this morning in there, when we did a final check to see what came in before the deadline. And we were able to get it processed this morning. So this came in through the district scenario modeler yesterday after late afternoon.
And the overall deviation of this map is 6.5%. And although it's technically contiguous in the connection of Coronado to the rest of District Four, there may be just a little bit of work, because it's just barely. So we'd want to clean that up a bit.
Alex, this one, could you provide the deviations for District Three and District Five?
Yeah, the deviation of District Three is negative 1.4%, and District Five is over by 1.6%. But the, the two deviations that are deriving, the overall deviation of 6.5% is District Four is over by 4.1%. That's the most over the ideal, and the most under the ideal is District Two in green, and that's negative 2.4%.
And Alex, this is Marguerite, Chair, if I may ask a question.
It's.
Alex, does this map contain two districts predominantly outside of incorporated areas?
It does. District Three in yellow, obviously. In fact, District One is as well. And I can tell you that District One is 53% unincorporated, so just barely, but it is. And actually, District Five is also with 68% in unincorporated, mostly, you know, because of Camp Pendleton.
As well as Rancho, Rancho Santa Fe, and the Santa Gito planning area there. That, that would be deceptive because it's an unincorporated, sort of, not quite an unincorporated island, but close to it in that area.
Go ahead, Alex.
Oh, no, go, sorry, go ahead, Marguerite.
Yes, so the unincorporated area in D5 is Camp Pendleton.
As well as what John mentioned, Rancho Santa Fe.
Oh, that area. Okay, I see it now. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And then, I would also like to note that we have loaded each of these public maps into the web viewer. So if this comes up where you would like to speak or have more questions about these in the specific districts, we can pull those up, whether it's in the thematic discussion or any other point in time, so that we can review them in a bit more detail.
Good. Not seeing any other requests for the floor. John, do you want to continue with the COI update?
Yes, just one second.
And while I bring it up, I'll note for the record that our demographers' ability to turn around a map from 4:30 yesterday afternoon and have it loaded for possible consideration is exactly the standard I wanted to make sure the public was aware of. We are doing everything we can. My thanks to the demographers. My thanks to Kuscher Dustel's muted clap. I joined in it. And again, commissioners, thank you for your patience in absorbing that information, but I'm very glad we're taking the public maps with all due consideration. John, sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And unfortunately, I regret to inform you that the COI update is somewhat woefully out of date because we did see, receive so many comments during the meeting last night. However, prior to yesterday, between the last meeting and yesterday, we had received 245 additional comments. I do not have the specific breakdown numbers in front of me right now. What I will say is that those comments have all been coded, and they are being loaded into the active web tool as we speak, but they have, our team has downloaded all of those and coded them. So those are all done, with the exception of what came in during the meeting, which I believe is another 200-something. So that is coded. It will be, I am, I am multitasking here to get those loaded into the tool, and during the course of this meeting, they would, that tool will be refreshed to be on the public site.
Excellent. Any questions, commissioners, regarding community of interest update-related issues? Very good. John, Alex, anything more?
I believe we are ready or done with the public map and COI and ready for the draft map whenever you are.
Yeah, if the intent survey was to really briefly look over those 13A and 14 versions, I can do that now.
I believe so, and I'll just look to commissioners. We'll do this expeditiously, but I'll ask you to continue to jump in, and we can pause if any clarifying question needs to be offered. So John, please go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll take this. Yep, yep. So last night, we showed the criteria. I think we're all well aware of this, so I will move forward and look at the motion items for 13A. These are one through six. As we scroll through the maps, a reminder that most of these are individual, except for two through four, that were kind of needed to be tracked as one because of the amount of population being moved and the attempt to have equal population. So the first version was really simply moving Elephant Forest and Harmony Grove into the same district, so that happens here by putting Elephant Forest, where my cursor is, into the yellow district. Deviation of this map is 6.8%. Just zoom on this real quick. That's just a population change for this Elephant Forest, since it's in place of 630, to move it in with Harmony Grove. Two through four are a little bit complex, so we're gonna go, I'll go through each of them real briefly. Note that the.
Alex, for what it's worth, though, I think you did a good job of explaining it last night. I think you can just display the highlights, and commissioners, I'm not trying to cut anyone off. If you have a question that needs clarification, please ask, but I also want to keep us moving, especially because Alex did such a great job explaining this last night.
Thanks. Yep. So these are the two change areas. You can see how District Four gained the area here, Miramesa, Rancho Penasquitos, whereas District Three picked up this mostly unincorporated area with CDPs like Rancho, Santa Fe, and Fairbanks Ranch.
If I, just, I'm sorry, can I just add, the one thing that's a little confusing to me in this version one through six, what version exactly are we looking at here? That's the thing that's been confusing to me, is can you clarify that? Like this Rancho Penasquitos change, and when you provided the overall deviation or whatever, are we looking at just that one change? Are we looking at, which changes are we looking at?
Yeah, for, for two through four, the deviation was like shown as if you'd made motion items two through four altogether, and we didn't get to the point where it could be below 10 because as we followed the motions and even took a little bit of liberties to like try to get it to under 10, it, we started to get too far away from the motions, and we're like, we don't want to stray too far. So we want to show you some of the moves that were made and our potential, but that more work would have to be done, such as doing one through six altogether. That gets you down below 10%. But we wanted to kind of step through each of these change areas, so. Um but we wanted to kind of step through each of these change areas, so to speak.
Okay, so this is two through four?
Correct. Yeah, but right now in the map, we're focusing on on item number two, which was about the central area here. Yep.
Thank you.
And then item number three then was about south of El Cajon. And we have um. Yeah, that change from District Two in this area, Rancho San Diego, Spring Valley, becoming District Three. Um that's a pretty significant population change. And then Bonita was moved from District One into District Three as well. That necessitated some changes here with District One and Three. Um to help try to balance population a bit. And then I'm gonna scroll over to the change that was item number four, and that was. District Two because of the changes we just went through was low on population, so it needed to take some area on. So it takes Linda Vista, Sarah Mesa. Um from District Four and goes into District Two, its population changed seventy-eight thousand. Five was. Mostly about this area to the southeast of Escondido, it's unincorporated, but associated with Escondido. So moving that into District Five, just cleaning up a little bit here to make sure a community plan area was also wholly in District Five. Total, these three changes are just six thousand six hundred and five. Uh population change to District Five. And then lastly, it was moving Coronado into District One. So. Uh sorry, yeah, District One from District Four. So that's a population change of Coronado is twenty-two thousand four ninety-seven when just doing Coronado, the municipality. When making sure we have like a connection. Um well, the connection isn't necessary, but to balance population, um taking a bit of. Uh downtown San Diego bumps that change up to thirty-three thousand. So. Then on to fourteen. And those four motion items, we'll look through those individually real briefly. First one is a change to replicate. Um thirteen B in the area of um Elephant Forest and Rancho Santa Fe. Overall deviation five point four percent. Let me zoom in, you can see that these areas, Elephant Forest, Rancho Santa Fe, Fairbanks Ranch, and some of the surrounding area. Is moved into District Two. It's a top population change of thirteen and a half thousand. Um motion item number two is to move District One. Um area out in the East County into District Two, so this is that big change area. The issue with this is that you no longer have two districts that are predominantly uh unincorporated county. So you'd have to work around here to have District One take on some more area to make sure that it's predominantly unincorporated. That's just a zoomed in version of that change area. It's a population change of twenty-three thousand. Item number three was to move Escondido into District Two. And then move North County Census Designated Places and Reservations Tribal Areas into District Five. So you can see here, that's moving Escondido from District Five into District Two, the green one. It's a change of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, just under. And then to compensate for that, moving this whole area to the north, including Camp Pendleton. Into, from District Two to District Five, it's a hundred and fifty-three thousand, so kind of a one for one trade there. Lastly, point four, moving Coronado into District One. Like I mentioned before, it's a municipality has twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-seven population. Any questions on these?
John, I Alex, I just wanted to um clarify, we heard discussion yesterday about Solana Beach being split.
Yeah.
Can you just point out which variation that was on?
Actually, I think that was on map uh thirteen, wasn't it on a thirteen A thirteen A version two, I think it was.
I believe so, yeah.
So too, and I just wanted to make sure we had covered it, and I I apologize for having to go back, but.
Uh it's perfectly, all right, it is right here. So in the motion, it was um. Moving Rancho Santa Fe into District Three along with Solana Beach and areas east of I five. So it's this spot right here, I'll zoom in. Um this part of.
In the third paragraph, you mentioned in portion of Solana Beach cheese to buy five. That's what we're.
That's correct.
Very good. I just wanted to make sure we had noted that.
That was version two, right, Alex, on thirteen A?
Yep, this is item number two, yep.
Yeah, right, okay.
Okay. Any quest, additional questions, comments? Sorry, I didn't mean to seize the floor. Commissioner Diaz?
Yes, my question was on thirteen A version. Um just making sure that we're clear why it does not meet the criterion. Um that all. You know, that of equal population, I think it's important to point that out. Um I just missed. That, is it because we don't have enough of the unincor- uh unincorporated area in?
No, this one is because we have a overall deviation above or over ten percent. And that's because looking at these three motion items and trying to stick with them as best as possible. Um and even taking some liberties to try to get it below ten percent, we just couldn't quite get there. And didn't want to take it too far away from the motion items um that it's, wasn't following them um truly. So we stopped and, you know, noted that it was above ten, but um we did. And I can bring this up, along with. The other. Items, this was posted. Um it's just not part of the presentation was that uh if you did all, you know, six of these together in unison. Then you do get, um and I can go back to the map, but I'll just show the stats, then you do get under. Uh ten percent at nine point four. Um but that includes everything. So you know, that's changing Coronado to just, and a little bit of downtown San Diego into District One. Um. And making all the changes.
And I noticed you also grabbed a bit of Bonita.
Correct, that was part.
Yeah. Yeah.
Correct, yep.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Dustall, and then we'll move on to Commissioner Statements, just as a, or I will ask, give counsel a moment, then. But Commissioner Dustle.
Thank you. Sorry, so I was confused because I thought the one that came under ten percent was thirteen A version six. So what is thirteen A version six? That only moving Coronado?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. So um John, Alex, assuming no final thoughts?
Uh I'll just mention that the Solana Beach. Um in doing this, I can, I can, the Solana Beach, that half of Solana Beach is roughly four thousand people. Just so you're aware of the population in that area.
Appreciate the highlight of that. Good. So with that, we move on to ask Marguerite if she has anything in particular she wants to add. Um or give Commissioners a chance to take questions. I did want to add at this point, and Marguerite, I don't think you need to say anything more about it yourself, but please feel free. Um Commissioners, there were some comments yesterday. That came from self-identified politically affiliated groups. Explicitly politically affiliated with a political party or two. That is, of course, completely in order for them to submit their comments. And I assume Commissioners remain keenly aware of the statutory prohibition on how we consider those comments. So I'll just stay for the record, we're aware of those comments. We certainly have no problem with them being taken, and we will proceed just as we always have with regard to. Uh the discretion in handling those comments. Marguerite?
Yes, uh thank you, uh Chair Bam. I'm going to proceed quickly uh through all of the points. There are just a few of them here. And I will go back on the ones you would like to question on. I am going to suggest that we perhaps defer a more in-depth numbering discussion. Until we have a map. It is uh, sounds easy, uh but when we get there, you will find out it's not clear. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to spend time on it on draft maps. And we're gonna spend a lot of time of it on it on the final mail. So uh number one, the California Voting Rights Act was cha- uh mentioned several times last evening. It is a California-specific Voting Rights Act. It's quite similar to the Federal Voting Rights Act. But it only applies to at-large voting systems. The county has a by-district voting system, and that's why you are redistricting. So uh the comments are appreciated. And the the intent, the sentiment of the cop uh uh comments are appreciated. But it's not an additional concern for this commission. Um number two, uh uh the Chair uh. Took my comment and I appreciate it about the consideration of incumbents. You are not permitted to consider incumbents in any way. But neither can you purposefully discriminate for against them. So that's, that's uh enough said there. Uh many, many important comments on the Latino community in District Five. Um. I do want to remind you what we have heard also from our V R A expert who will be joining us later. Uh it is not possible to create. A Latino majority district in that area. But what you have from that area is very strong community of interest testimony. And you are certainly able. To take that testimony into account in creating a district. That recognizes that community of interest. However, your focus in District Five should be on communities of interest and not race. Uh and then, as we move forward. I would like to advise you and urge you, and I may even be active on this. To talk about the reasons for the decisions you are making. We are up to a final map. And I haven't jumped in to your working with draft maps, experimenting here and experimenting there. But we were, we are at the final product. Please state your reasons for the record. Of the changes you are making with specific reference to the criteria. And as we get closer to a final map. I may ask the Chair to put up the criteria slide again. So we all remember what we are doing here. Last comment, and I will close. With regard to communities of interest. You have many overlapping and conflicting. You have discretion. But please state on the record how you are exercising that discretion. You cannot satisfy everybody. Boy, did that ever become a theme last night? And you do have discretion, you should not be troubled by that. But please state on the record. How you are exercising your discretion in particular instances. And uh Chair Bam, I think we can move on, but I'm happy to ask questions if this is appropriate time. Or as they come up during the discussion.
And Commissioners, thank you for that, all that, Marguerite, uh extremely useful. Uh Commissioners do be aware, when we come back from lunch, the first thing we will do is put up the statutory criteria slide. Just as a reminder, and we will do that anytime anybody needs it brought up again, uh because I think Marguerite's comments on. Stating for the record, how we're proceeding and why is extremely important. That said, we're a little, a little behind where I projected to be, but not that much. I do want to give Commissioners an opportunity to ask Council questions if they're so inclined with the idea that. It'd be easier to ask very concise clarifying questions at this point. But any comments or questions for Council, Commissioner?
So is there a clear authority for numbering with a specific legislative body like ours or the R O V?
Um Commissioner, and then there is not specific authority. With regard to the county of San Diego. There is specific authority with regard to the state. But reaching out and grabbing that authority and using it as a model would cause massive upheaval in the county. In the state, you're required to number from north to south. So you can see what that would do to to traditional numbering in the county. With regard to San Diego County, there is nothing in code or in charter. Nor is there anything with regard to any other counties. The standard approach is to minimize deferrals. In other words, keep as many voters as possible on the same election schedule. That sounds pretty simple. But when we get there, our so, our our excellent consultants. Um flow uh will show us some of the choices we may be faced with. And this is entirely in the discretion. Of the commission, assuming that it is applied with the same standards to all. This can't be an arbitrary exercise.
Thank you for that. Thank you again, Marguerite. With that, we're going to turn to Commissioner Statements. Uh I will trust Commissioners already because I'm about to ask the clerk to call Commissioners in random order. With the understanding, David, that I'd like you to put the co-vice chairs and then me at the end. And have the other eleven Commissioners or whatever portion thereof are here go first. So not seeing any requests for the floor, David, would you please? Start, use the randomizer, I haven't said that word in quite a while, to generate an order and start calling on Commissioners for one-minute statements.
Begin with Commissioner Russ, followed by Commissioner Inman.
Population of San Diego County is approximately three point three million. And we have heard via email, phone calls, and in person. From over one thousand individuals and maybe even uh something approaching two thousand. Now normally, this would be a statistically significant sample size from a population of approximately three point three million people. But that's if the sample were randomly selected. However, these inputs from the public have been self-selected. Many of these inputs seem to have been co- uh coordinated and redundant in a get out to vote type of a campaign. Most of concerned sing- single issues and many do not consider our constraints nor any downstream consequences. We cannot be, we cannot be so narrow. Many do not realize that their single issue is addressed in both maps thirteen and fourteen, for example. Nevertheless, through the chatter, we did get some good input. I'm coming to the end of my time, but I want to say my choice of maps would be I R C map thirteen A as originally proposed before the recent variations. Tweaks of the public submitted, public uh public submitted map twelve, which would require minimal tweak to connect or not connect Coronado.
Commissioner Inman, followed by Commissioner Hanson.
Uh yes, thank you. First, uh I do want to state that I did join the meeting last night. I was there for public testimony for approximately two, two and a half hours, as well as some of the the proceedings. So I I did hear, uh not all of what you heard, but uh uh a good portion. Uh my map preference remains with thirteen A. If you look at communities of interest, I would start with the South Bay. Uh we can create a minority-majority district in the South Bay, and we should. I then go to the East County Rural District. That is an important community of interest that should not be connected with a coastal urban population. I then go to the North County and look at Escondido and the areas of Fallberg Valley Center. There's a cultural coif that exists up there that I do believe is important to maintain. And then the other districts fall in line. Uh after that, a a central coastal district. Um is an important district for for that area to manage uh uh to manage its its common interest. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Hanson, followed by Commissioner. Commissioner Hanson, followed by Commissioner Chen.
I believe that we have all learned where there, the three areas of contention are located. And that regardless of what map we are working from, that we have to resolve those conflicts before we can proceed to a final map. The first one, will the rural north coastal areas such as Fallbrook, Bonzel, and other areas, the Indian reservations, be in a district with North County? The cities that they are dependent upon and share a very well-defined community of interest? Or will they be connected to all of East County? More, many of the areas more than 75 miles away? I vote that North County rural be joined with 78 cities. Will El Cajon remain as a rural community with East County? Or connect with the Western settlements with refugees resettlement populations?
One minute.
And the third was, should Coronado be connected with South County? Thank you. I, I like 3, 13A also.
Commissioner Chen, followed by Commissioner Diaz.
I favor Map 14. Three, uh, my, most of my comments are based around North County. That's what I'm familiar with. I think Carlsbad needs to stay with the 78 corridor due to watershed issues, hospital issues, airport issues. And that brings the issue then up of Escondido versus the trade-off of the Pendleton-Fallbrook um, tribal lands, uh, which would be part of North 5. You can have all of that in North County District. So my, my overall view is I would probably go with the tribal lands and Fallbrook joining Carlsbad and the other 78 corridor cities with Escondido remaining in a different district, mostly because um, I think a principle we might want to follow to avoid litigation against us is if it's not broke, don't fix it. You know, if we have to make difficult trade-offs, I'd rather make a trade-off that leaves things as they are because as many people pointed out last night and in other areas that Escondido is working well and is, um, very intertwined with those other communities, even though it's not in the same district today.
Commissioner Diaz, and then I believe Commissioner Kuliak is still absent, so Commissioner Larson.
Commissioner Diaz. I urge this commission to move forward to refine Map 14. Um, the legal analysis we received yesterday shows that increased the power of minority groups and their ability of elect other preferred candidates. Map 13A splits a well-defined community of interest. Um, and in the Miramesa area, and none of the versions of Map 13A represent, uh, presented to us honor the cohesiveness of this community. I believe we could make a compromise in Map 14 to recognize the cohesiveness of the communities of interest in North County as defined by the tribes, the Latinx community, and the residents of the 78th corridor. Map 14 supports the community of interest that includes both, both City Heights and El Cajon, two major hubs of refugee immigrant resettlement. It is my hope that these communities can work together and that share the same cultural and social bonds, but the same common history and understanding. We can work together to make Map 14 the most representative of the present and future of San Diego. Thank you.
Commissioner Larson, followed by Commissioner Brown.
Well, thank you. I, along with my fellow commissioners, have carefully studied the, um, criteria, the public comments, the various maps. And I guess my final, uh, view for a, a draft map is 13A version six. I want to strongly argue for a separate coastal district. We have many issues that don't really involve the rest of the county. These issues include the sea level rise, the coastal erosion, most of the homeless problems, the short-term vacation rentals. And while I was on the police commissioners', uh, advisory council, it was referred to as the entertainment zone for the county. And, uh, it's more than that. So, uh, I'd like to see a, a separate district from, uh, Coronado up through Carlsbad, balanced with the other criteria. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown, followed by Commissioner Serbin.
Hello, um, my choice is 13A to go forward. Um, I think it's very important to keep the District Five, um, including the, uh, main cities along the 78 and those smaller cities that are north of that or to the east of it uh, that are dependent upon those, the cities along the Highway 78. So that's my main concern. I think we need to tweak a little bit, uh, in the other districts. Uh, there's some moving of cities that are normally thought of as coastal cities that are in D3 that should move over to the coast. And I don't know about what to do with El Cajon. It has a large population. If we're wanting to split that up, I don't know if that's such a good idea or not. Um, I think that's up for discussion. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Serbin, followed by Commissioner Pons.
Thank you. So what we do now in this commission sends a message to San Diego now and in the future. This message is of the new San Diego that's emerged in the last decade. San Diego that we've learned about by listening for the past several months to hundreds of comments. This culminated last night in a clear message from the public that the public prefers Map 14. Speaker after speaker expressed clear unequivocal support of this map. By my count of those who specified a preferred map, 75 speakers expressed support for Map 14, nearly twice as many as the second most popular map. Time and again, members of the public have appeared before us, forming a coalition in support of several elements of this map, which I don't need to go over right now because the public repeated it over and over last night. Hopefully you remember. The Communities Together Coalition draws from a broad and diverse group of San Diegans who live in this, it live in and speak for those throughout the county. Several organizations consistently provided input on this map and stated their support as, as it went through different iterations. The, what struck me is that these comments acknowledged that Map 14 doesn't do as much as it can for their own community, but it increases the benefits for all communities. I urge this commission to listen to what the gentleman said last night when he said to listen to Map 14.
Commissioner Pons, followed by Commissioner Dostal.
Thank you. Uh, look, based on the comments from Dr. Gross's team regarding polarized voting and Mr. Adelson's comments regarding the Voting Rights Act, I am inclined to move Draft 14, Draft Map 14 forward with the focus on attempting to address the issues in East County, North County. And also in consideration for the, uh, community of interest public input. I like to point out that connecting Coronado with the district that contains Naval Station San Diego is a good idea. So I would ask us to look at that because we have different options based on the bridge connection and the two ferry connections going from Coronado over to, uh, Broad, Broadway Pier as well as the Convention Center. And the last thing is, when you look at Draft Map 14, when you look at the, uh, RPV analysis, even though District 3 is nuanced, that 6% nuanced uh, data is still relevant. So it gives us a very good spread when you start talking about polarized voting. So again, moving that 14 is my preference.
Commissioner Dostal and then co-vice chair Katerina.
Thank you. Um, so I prefer 13A. Um, I'm looking at Map 12, Public Submitted Map 12, and it actually makes a lot of the changes that I would recommend. The first is, we've heard from the sovereign nations, that, that the tribal nations that they want to be part of the Northern District. I think that's really important. I also think Escondido should be part of that district. Um, so that's Map 11. Uh, the second point is that I think it makes sense to keep Coronado in District 1 to balance the population. Um, communities of interest are about keeping a community together. It's not about who we're going to exclude. Um, in District 1, we already have a Latino opportunity district. Um, and that, and it already includes Coronado. So I want, and it gets rid of the issue of contiguity. Um, El Cajon, um, I think, you know, we heard a lot of, um, conflicting commentary about El Cajon. I think we should consider putting it back in East County. Thank you.
Co-vice chair Katerina and then co-vice chair Garcia.
Thank you. Um, I prefer Map 13A. I think there are lots of opportunities to improve upon it and, and be respectful of the input we've received from the community. Um, and I recognize that we are going to have to use some discretion when we draw these maps because we cannot make everybody happy. And this is unfortunately not a popularity contest. So we are going to have to think about what is going to be best for our communities. I support keeping Escondido and the majority of the 78-quarter cities connected to the rural area north of them in North County. And I support the BIPOC community, um, in, in South Bay. I do consider that we can move Coronado into, to Chula Vista to, to, to mayor, Commissioner Pons' statements. Um, and I think we need to keep the central coastal area intact, um, as much as we can. Thank you.
Co-vice chair Garcia and then Chair Baim.
Thank you. Um, both maps reflect public input that we have received, and in fact, they share, uh, many things in common. For example, they both contain a district that responds to input from the immigrant and refugee and BIPOC community. Um, they both have majority-minority, uh, Latino districts, which by the way, the existing map also does. But they're both imperfect. But we have to pick one map. Um, how are they imperfect? For example, they push the envelope and, and stretch credi, 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 uh, I'm sorry. They, 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 they don't make sense with, um, on contributing with the way they both handle Coronado, which I find problematic. Uh, neither passes what I call the eyeball test with regards to compactness. And more importantly, they both have overall deviations that are too high and barely improve on that score with the existing map. Um, overall deviations are too high. And the, our struggle with that points to the fact that we have been perhaps too focused on meeting public desires public input, not all of which has been, uh, about describing coys. So, um, coys are in fact our fourth criterion, not our first. So given that, I prefer Map 13A. I think it's the map that we can work from that can achieve the things that we need to accomplish.
Chair Baim.
Thank you. My comments will be strictly on highlighting what I think several commissioners have said. The need to attend to all our criteria and not just community of interest input. And I say that in part because some of the groups who spoke yesterday, one in particular, associated themselves with a group position. And then in at least one case, had one speaker contradict the immediate previous speaker. Which for me means they were focused on a number of broad issues. That's completely legitimate. But I'm hesitant when I'm hearing conflicting grounds to take any group position as a solid group position. I'm not trying to say that group needed to be lockstep with each other, but I am attended to. How are those individual speakers reacting? So I do want to focus, as particularly Commissioner Russ said, on the numbers as well as both, as co-vice chair Garcia said, the eyeball test, but also the actual legitimate test of these various statute, statutory criteria. Very good. Thank you, David, for keeping us on time and keeping focused. Commissioners, I know one minute is a very limited time, but I found that very, very useful. That said, if I do my math and include Commissioner Kuliak's statement from yesterday, which I think expressed preference from Map 14, if I exclude myself because I hate being a deciding vote, I have
Oh, come on, seriously? I, I want to call the court, I, I
I, I'm doing this for a reason, Rosette, and we'll talk about it. We have eight for 13A, five for 14. I would be, my clip, my top concern at this moment is time and efficiency. You heard me as chair express great regret that we were not working from one map at the end of the November 19th meeting. With this majority in mind, for strictly procedural reasons, I would very much prefer to have a decision now to consider whether or not to work from Map 13A. I will entertain a clarifying question before I ask for that motion, but I will not enter into debate yet. We're going to do that under a motion. Commissioner Diaz, then co-vice chair Katerina.
Well, I'm just, um, maybe this could be part of the discussion, but noting the population deviation is higher in 13.
Commissioner Diaz, I'm going to, because if it's a substantive discussion, we have to do it under a motion. And I, I do think we may be headed towards a motion before we enter discussion. I want to make sure that that's understood and only entertain for now clarifying points before we take a motion. Co-vice chair Katerina, Commissioner Serbin, co-vice chair Garcia.
Well, I would like to call for the motion, so I will wait.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Serbin.
Could counsel apply, um, speak to, um, Commissioner or co-chair, um, co-vice chair Garcia's concerns as to the, it sounded like there were some, some legal concerns that co-vice chair Garcia, um, was raising about um, one or, one or two of the map, or one or the other map as far as, I think, the contiguity Coronado question and then um, a compactness issue, I think, was raised. So are there issues?
That Commissioner Serbin, that's, that's a substantive issue to take up. I'm right now focused just on the process. I'll entertain points of order or points of information. Co-vice chair Garcia.
I call for the question.
Okay.
A second.
Yeah, okay, hold on. We need to define the motion first on the question. And I want to be clear that I'm going to entertain a motion based on the majority of expressions. Co-vice chair Katerina, you were the first to say, say it, so I'll take the motion from you. Do I understand you want to offer a motion to begin working from Map 13A?
That's correct.
Very good. Do we have a second on that?
My second.
Commissioner Larson, thank you. Now we can entertain discussion. I will note, it's 11:07. I'm going to use my best judgment on how the discussion is going. We are not going to go into a circular discussion. Commissioners, please make your points concisely and clearly, but without having to repeat anything. Commissioner Diaz? And then Commissioner Serbin, do you want to raise the point you were raising before? After Commissioner Diaz?
Sure, do I have to repeat myself?
Uh, I'm sorry?
I said, sure, but do I have to repeat myself?
Um, no, not necessarily. Just if council needs you to, we'll ask her, but let me call in Commissioner Diaz first.
No, I just to clarify, um, our primary concern here is for Map 13. I mean, the, the, looking at the deviation, the population deviation is much higher compared to 14. So my question to the folks that support 13 is looking at the order of criteria. What is it about 13 that's fulfilled here? Because if we can't consider communities of interest as number one, it's when we think about things in order of preference, what, not preference, order of, of what we're required to do, what is it? And yeah, I'm, I'm just not clear here. And also from the California VRA, um, I want to get some more specifics on specifically only applies to at-large voting systems. County is by district only. So which jurisdictions, um, it would apply in that case? And if adopting Map 13 or a version of that would be, um, in violation or not, I don't know because I'm not the legal expert here.
Okay, I'm going to hold, again, I don't want to get bogged down in this. I'm going to hold questions for council as a group. We will take Commissioner Serbin, Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Dosto, co-vice chair Katerina, Commissioner Russ, Commissioner Pons. Please, 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 keep your comments as concise as possible. Commissioner Serbin.
Thank you, Chair Baim. So my comment is, again, um, a question as to, I'd just like to revisit, um, co-vice chair Garcia's concerns. Um, they sounded like they were legal ones, so I, I'd like to see if council can address them. And then, um, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm a little floored that we're moving forward with a map that, that what, what sounded like the public was clearly, um, there was, another map was, was clearly, um, supported by the public last night. And so I'm, I'm a little floored by that. That, that's the comment I have. I'd like to hear from Marguerite. Thank you.
Um, co-vice chair Garcia, is that a point?
Uh, yeah, so I just want to quickly respond to Commissioner Ramis's. I, the, the concerns that I raised are, um, present in both maps. So it's not a question of one map or the other map. I just think overall, you know,
Okay, very good.
I don't think, yeah, I think, I think there's, I mean, yeah, that's what it sounded like. I don't think, I think, I think there's, I mean, yeah, that's what it sounded like. So I'd like to hear from counsel. Thank you.
Understood. Commissioner Hanson.
I want to underscore the fact that we're working from one map. It doesn't mean that this is the perfect, the end be-all and the end-all. We have to have a place to start. Many of the people who said that they were for map fourteen also were for what we refer to as the Pana configuration of District Four. Well, that's the same in both maps. So a lot of the reasoning behind voting for fourteen as opposed to thirteen A was moot because they both have the same characteristics. So this is not the end. This is not not going to be the final decision, but we have to pick someplace to work from. And it's not to deny the legitimacy of the comments that we heard. It's just to incorporate them from a different angle. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioners, I want to be very clear here. I'm going to use discretion on giving the floor to any commissioner a second time. If I think the debate's been covered, I'm not going to entertain that. I also would urge commissioners in referring to any public submissions to please keep them in a to a general reference. The submission we had for the BIPOC corridor or the submission we've been working from with regard to the BIPOC corridor, rather than singling out one or another group. I do think that's important for the record at this stage in particular. So just to update Commissioners Dostal, Katerina, Russ and Pons. Commissioner Dostal.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to Sonia's comment because I agree with what Commissioner Hanson said that there are issues with map eleven. I think there's a lot of issues, but again, we need to start from somewhere. And going back to, I believe it was Commissioner Russ who talked about fatal flaws in fourteen, I agree with that. That's why I want to start with thirteen A. Not that I think it's perfect, not that I don't think we need to make some, you know, some significant changes, but I do think it's a better place to start. So that's why I just want to move forward because we got to, we we need to get down to one map. And I think thirteen A is the better one. Thank you.
And just for the sake of of efficiency, I would associate myself with those comments and will be likely supporting thirteen A. Commissioner, Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
Hi, I just wanted to say, you know, to to reiterate what everyone else is saying, these are starting points. We have to start somewhere. And and in revisiting thirteen A, we can consider the comments that we've heard from the coys and the communities in our in our county. And and that doesn't mean that that the map is going to stay the way it is. It's I can guarantee it's not. And part of our next level of thematic discussion is going to help us figure out which of the areas are most important. And I don't want to take up any more time, but I just want to make it clear that we are going to change this map. And there are going to be substantial discussions as soon as we finish this one.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Russ.
Yeah, in my opening comments, I was trying to anticipate something like what Commissioner Serbin was going to say. And you have to realize, as I said, the these are self-reported. These are self-selected comments. And and even though we may have heard a thousand, fifteen hundred, maybe two thousand comments, they're self-selected. They're not randomly separated, not not randomly selected. So therefore, really, the comments, you 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 have to judge them as being not statistically significant to the entire population. So I was trying to anticipate something like what Commissioner Serbin said. The other is that there's some fatal flaws in in map fourteen, which I know Commissioner Pons is going to ask me about because he's asked asked me about them before. So in anticipation of that, Frank, if I may, here's here's two of the fatal flaws, I think, in in fourteen. The southeast county is traversed by two five hundred kilovolt high voltage power lines, which terminate in Lakeside. There are large wind turbines that dot the landscape. An extremely large solar photovoltaic plant is looking to be sited next to Boulevard. These are issues that that the southeast part of the county have. At Chula Vista doesn't have these type of these type of these type of issues. The other fatal flaw is up in the North County, in the northwestern part. Moving Carlsbad to the coastal district makes sense in that Carlsbad has seven miles of coast. And the city website actually touts its beaches, among other attractions. It's its commonality with the other state Route seventy-eight cities is that approximately one mile of its northern border is along State Route seventy-eight. Whereas State Route seventy-eight goes right through the heart of Escondido. Escondido needs to be included as well as the North County rural areas. So those are the two big in anticipation of your 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 questions, Frank, I want I I wrote those down. Thank you, sir. I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Pons.
Okay, Commissioner Russ must be a mind reader, but going back to the issue of the environmental impact issues. The next, the next commission should be privileged to an environmental and economic impact statement study that will help a lot of this in my lessons learned recommendation. For me, if we meet the seven statutory requirements, because they are all equally weighted, and I think I heard someone say, you know, one is more prioritized over the other, and I think they are all equally weighted, those seven that we have in the brief. So I will ask us to continue to stick with that. As far as the draft maps thirteen A and fourteen, they both have flaws. And I think those flaws can be, as a guy said last night, massage or or, you know, just adjusted so that we come into compliance. But both of those maps, when you look at the R P V analysis, they can really fit into that study and they can, we can give all the districts, you know, an opportunity to elect and select a candidate of choice. And that's where I am really focused after we go through the seven-point pass-through of statutory requirements. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown.
Okay, as far as Commissioner Pons mentioned, the the points that are statutory, those are stat, we have to meet all of those points, but we are supposed to do it in the order that they're on the list. And I think that the population has the highest priority. Is that just my understanding of it? I don't know if that's right or wrong or what. And then secondly, oh, shoot, my brain just went flop. Can I come back to it? Can I let somebody else go now and then I'll come back?
Um, my intention, Commissioner Brown, was to call on counsel since you just keyed that up perfectly. And I'm trying to draw it out just long enough that you can recall what else I wanted to say.
All right.
Okay.
I don't remember, so it must not have been too important.
Okay, so we are ten minutes into this discussion, which was roughly what I had planned. I'm going to ask counsel to address any comments, any questions that were asked or comments that were just offered, including on the points Commissioner Pons and Commissioner Brown just raised regarding priority of statutory criteria. I have hands up from Commissioners Serbin and Diaz. I will ask them to listen closely to counsel, and if they have something new to say, then I will entertain that very briefly, and then we'll move to a vote. Marguerite.
Very quickly, Commissioner Brown is correct. The criteria are prioritized. And that's in the language of the statute. With regard to the first criteria, equal population, you do have flexibility there to meet other criteria. But it is number one, and you need to keep the deviation under ten percent. But remember, these are real people being represented. And ten percent is what thirty thousand people? So the lower, the better. But you do have flexibility there. Number two, for Commissioner Diaz, a good example of the application of the California Voting Rights Act was in the seventy-eight corridor cities. In the middle of this decade, they all elected council at large. Everybody in the city, all voters, voted for all candidates. Because of the application of the California Voting Rights Act, those cities now have council district elections. So that is how the California Voting Rights Act applies. The county already has supervisory district elections. Therefore, it has no application. With regard to contiguity, California has specific history with the concept and has recognized that contiguity can be achieved by a bridge, by ferry service. That language is actually included in the statute that govern other counties. It's not included in your statute, but a court would look to analogous statutes for interpretation. And we have other sources of precedent as well. However, by far, the safest course is to avoid the issue, in my view, for litigation. And that is done by moving Coronado south, if there is a rationale to do that. However, if the sense of the commission is that Coronado doesn't need to be there, you need to establish two things. That we are nevertheless contiguous and that communities of interest demand it. So that's on contiguity. Compactness is the least of the criterion. But a district that seems to skirt around naturally connected population centers raises a question. I think as Commissioner Diaz pointed out, both plans thirteen A and fourteen present the issues. I expect all of this to be massaged. And so at this point, I don't find that the contiguity or the compactness issues present prevent you from proceeding with either map. We will address those as the map developed. Last point, I fully agree with all of the commissioners that are saying this is a starting point. Because if it weren't, I'd have a lot more to say. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back to the chair unless you'd like me to elaborate.
I will simply say, Marguerite, I think that was very useful, and I think there will be a lot to elaborate on during our thematic discussion. But as several, as you and several commissioners have said, we are talking about a starting point vote. All right. I have three hands at eleven twenty-three. I will ask one at a time if there's something new to add, understanding Commissioner Brown, I think what yours is. And I will take Commissioner Brown first so that we can get that out right now. Commissioner Brown?
Great, so I don't forget it again. I just wanted to address what Commissioner Serbin had said about last night's meeting, which was a wonderfully attended meeting. There were quite a few voices in favor of the draft map fourteen over, much over thirteen. But they, that's not the only people we're listening to is who who showed up last night, and they were, I believe it was in Linda Vista physically. So that was closer to the Alcohone area and so forth, of the speakers that were kind of more in favor of the fourteen map. So I think if we go back and we look at all of the input that we've had, you'll see that there is quite a bit of support for what would be draft map thirteen, what ultimately became draft map thirteen. So I just want to comment on that.
Thank you for that. So Commissioner Serbin, new to add, and I'm going to be pretty strict on the timeline. Go ahead.
So I'd like to point out that someone earlier said that the supporters of fourteen were only supporting the Pana part of the map. Lots of the public comment that were in support of fourteen referenced multiple benefits of that map in relation to that, to that person's personal interest. So it wasn't about one thing that was good about that map that a lot of people liked. A lot of people liked a lot of the things about that map. And so that's why I think it's a better starting point than 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 the other map. And and also, with all respect, Commissioner Russ, I I I I want to just raise, you know, when you say it's not statistically significant to the population, that the the public comment that we had that we received, I, you know, we've been telling the public that we're doing our work based on census numbers and public comment. Those are the two things we're considering. So are we now saying that communities who organize then and and then provide us with consistent feedback, is that not statistically significant to us?
Okay, I'm sure we'll, I'm sure we'll take up, I'm sure we'll take up that debate. Commissioner Diaz, new comment?
Sorry. Yes, so I think the heart of this discussion, though, that we haven't been, it's the the big elephant in the room is actually the requirement that we have about the the amount of unincorporated area that we need to include into at least two districts in the final map. So I haven't heard yet from anyone here why they think that thirteen A would be a good starting point for that because really, honestly, no matter how we slice it and dice it, even with fourteen and thirteen together side by side, there there I see major differences. And I think we got to look at, you know, our total unincorporated population in the county is only what half a million plus change. So that in itself, we can't obviously create one rural district. We have to have at least two grab more densely populated areas. So I just don't see thirteen as that starting point. So if someone could just entertain me, why?
And we will certainly have, we'll certainly have that discussion. It'll be a necessary discussion regardless of which, whether we're working from one map or not. Commissioner Pons.
Keep your discussion.
Commissioner Pons, can you comment, please?
Yes, I want to thank the council for explaining that the list of criteria is in priority. So that takes me to my next point regarding complying with the Voting Rights Act because the conversation thus far, and I characterize it by saying they have been strategically ambiguous. So what I want to get is just a little bit more clarity and fidelity when Mr. Adelson comes online to say if this map is really complying with the VRA, and if it's not, I want to know exactly why not and what we have to do to fix it, to bring in line with compliance. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other requests for the floor, and I will clarify again, counsel, you do have the right to request the floor anytime there's a simple factual question. I'm sure commissioners will appreciate that. But not seeing any other requests. David, would you please call the roll for the for a vote on the motion offered by Co-Vice Chair Katerina, seconded by Commissioner Larson, to work from map thirteen A?
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Sherbin. Commissioner Brown?
I.
Commissioner Larson?
I.
Commissioner Diaz?
No.
Commissioner Chen?
No.
Commissioner Dostal?
I.
Com- Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
I.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
I.
Commissioner Russ?
I.
Commissioner Serbin?
Me.
Commissioner Inman?
I.
Commissioner Kugliak is absent. Sherbin?
I.
Commissioner Pons? Commissioner Pons?
David, I'm not showing Commissioner.
He just dropped off, yeah.
Yeah, okay, David, please continue, and we'll see if we can bring Commissioner Pons back. Staff, if you can help bring him back, please do.
Commissioner Hanson?
I.
That's the total roll. Do we want to hold on for Commissioner Pons?
We will pause for just a few seconds to see if it's a quick re-establishment.
Chair, this is Barbara. I am not seat, there he is. He's back.
Commissioner Pons, we just had the call for the vote, David.
I know, I'm sorry. And I was in it until I got knocked out. So is it time for me to vote?
Yes.
Okay, the answer is no on thirteen A.
Okay, the motion passes with Commissioners Pons, Serbin, Chen, and Diaz voting no. All other commissioners who are present voting aye. The vote is nine votes in favor, four opposed.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, David. So we now turn to the thematic discussion I mentioned with the target time limit of two hours. In other words, one thirty. I'll remind commissioners that after that thematic discussion, we still have I'll remind Commissioners that after that thematic discussion, we still have considerable work to do. And I'm going to assume that Commissioners, having taken the time for you, the useful discussion we just add. Are going to remain focused on efficient and effective discussion. That gets us to the requirement we have set for ourselves today. To emerge from this meeting with one map to move forward for December ninth. As we did for a similar thematic discussion in our earlier meeting, this discussion will aim to clarify key issues. By allowing Commissioners to hold direct dialogue, what I'm affectionately calling the Hanson Principle. For Commissioners to talk to each other in a relatively free-flowing discussion. As I said before, we'll have, we'll try to organize this around North County, then East County, then South County, then Central County. Bearing in mind comments made earlier about a possible discussion of a fifth theme with coastal, I think. I'll leave that to the co-Vice Chairs for now to consider and keep in mind. Uh, each segment though, of those four, at least four themes will go for about thirty minutes. With possible short extension if needed and helpful. The co-Vice Chairs will set the stage for each discussion, lead that discussion. And starting about five minutes from that thirty-minute time limit, about twenty-five minutes into discussion. Will look to offer some sort of wrap-up, either in the form of a short concise statement. Or a short concise question for continued consideration. Again, keep all that in mind, please, and we'll plan for a break for lunch after that discussion, probably around one forty at this point. Without any questions for the Chair. Who will be as quiet as he possibly can be on procedural grounds, let me turn to Co-Vice Chair Garcia. Uh, augmented by Co-Vice Chair Katerina to start us off on the thematic discussion. Rosette?
Thank you, Chair Baim. Um, so um, I, I want to start by saying that Commissioner Hanson. You did a very good job of pointing out those, um, what you identified as three areas of uh, con- contention. And, and I want to assure you that those are things that we plan to discuss and hopefully resolve. Um, Co-Chair Vice, uh, Co-Vice Chair Katerina and I will be coordinating this discussion with the goal. Um, of determining general prin- principles. Um, that the commission pref- prefers. Um, in other words, what are the general prin- principles that we as a commission or as a majority uh, of commissioners can agree on? And therefore, um, how can we move this map forward? Um, in such a way that it reflects those general principles, um, and helps us um, uh, create the motions that will do that. Um, we have identified several issues or questions that have gone unanswered or unresolved, and that's what we plan to discuss. Um, for the time being, we've grouped them into four categories. By geography, beginning with the North County. I will take that subject, then we'll move to East County. Amy will lead that discussion. We'll then head to South County, back to me, and then Central San Diego. And I think that the c- conversation is actually almost necessarily going to be around. Public input and communities of interest, so um, Commissioner Diaz, I hope that um, that. Answers uh, your concern about not organizing this conversation by communities of interest. Certainly that's what we were thinking about, and we just thought it, you know, made sense to sort of um, structure that around geography, if you will. Um, in the North County, we'll be talking about uh, the community of interest input that we've gotten there. Um, and in particular, um, where the tribal reservations belong, Escondido. And you know, Commissioner Inman mentioned this before, um, we have some big cities now. And one of the, one of the uh, one of the issues in, in North County is. Um, that the population in that district is pretty high and over the, the deviation, so we might need to talk about. Our tolerance for breaking up coy's or our tolerance for breaking up cities. And the East County, questions about Alcohone, population, where do we get population from? In the South County, um. Coronado, the bridge, how far out into the East County we go. Um, Central County is AAPI coastal and um, the BIPOC. So that's sort of how we have it framed. Um, and um, I see we have a couple of questions. What, I think, Co-Ve- Co-Vice Chair Katerina, Amy, did we, actually, we want to sort of make sure that. We had general broad agreement that this was um, a good way to, to go, is that correct? Okay.
Um, yes, but I don't want to get into a discussion about whether we should do it geographically or coy. We're doing it geographically because that's how we set it up. And we felt that we could address the coy issue as we um, target each uh, city. And, and certainly to look at the order of our discussion, we had to start somewhere, so we started at the top, we're working our way down. We know full well that conversations in North County are going to affect other places. And so we have to keep that in mind as we move forward, but it does not mean that we are going to make a decision about North County. And then not go back and, and, and address how it might impact some, some other area, if, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Um, so we. Commissioner Diaz, you, you lowered your hand. We, we'd like to get going with the conversation, but if these are sort of clarifying questions before we start the conversation, that would be fine, so Commissioner Diaz?
Yeah, just to clarify what um, Commissioner Katerino was saying, that was one of my concerns. Because if we're putting one area and speaking about that first, how is that going to have a ripple effect for the rest of the areas? That we want to discuss later, so I like the idea of just being flexible with that a little bit and coming back. So I just want to make sure that we're going to be able to do that with each of the different areas.
Yes, our, our plan is actually to actually reach some sort of resolution. It's not to talk about. I, I want to emphasize that, um, we're not discussing specific maps at this time, even map thirteen A necessarily. We're really talking more um, about the broad principles or priorities that are either reflected or not reflected. In the map. Um, and the, the idea is that we'll reach some resolution and that will help guide our motion. So that we're, we've already sort of uh, come together, if you will, and, and understand how. Uh, the, the commission as a whole would like to move forward um, with um, revising the map. Commissioner Serbin?
Um, okay, I'm not sure whether I'm clear on how that's going to work, because it sounds like if we come to a resolution and decide on something on one spot, uh, in one area. It would necessarily affect other areas. Um, but so that's a, I, can I just ask like, how, how is the starting point of the North County? As the first part of this conversation, is it just simply because it's at, it's the top of the map?
Um, we had, like, like Amy said, we had to start somewhere, so why don't we get started?
I, I would prefer, I would prefer at this point, that we start the conversation, as the co-Vice Chair said. Summary cap- summary statements can be revisited as we work through. Particularly because a commissioner may have a thought in a later discussion that affects something from earlier. That's why we'll take the lunch break, but for right now, I'd much rather we get on with the discussion. And I'm sure, I'm very confident this will become clearer as we move through.
Right. Thank you. Um.
Well, can I start? May I start?
Well, let me, how about if I, um.
Do we have to raise our hand?
Go ahead, well, Commissioner Dostal has her hand up.
Oh, okay.
Did you want, want to start, Rosette, as a, as a struc- just to give some structure and direction?
Well, I had the structure planned, I mean, I just, we just don't. We, we haven't been able, go ahead.
Um, well, do you want to finish your, your presentation? I'm sorry.
So we're going to start with the North County, which is what, what our plan was. And we're, um, some of the issues around North County had to do with, um, so. Uh, with that Latino coy. Um, and the Escondido in North County. Um, right now, the map does not have the tribal reservations um, in North County. So is that a principle that we, that we agree is something that we want to try and um, honor? Um, so that's one. Another one, um, in the North County has to do with. It's overpopulated, the number is kind of high, it's the thing, it's one of the, it's the district that's driving our overall deviation, one of them. So how can we, what do we, we need to discuss if there is anything that we are willing. Um, to do with regards to, for perhaps. Taking, you know, breaking up a city, for example, or taking out um, some population. Those are two, I don't know if Commissioners have others, other issues. I, I, I guess the other uh, question that we would want to ask that I thought we were going to be discussing, um, and maybe that question is resolved. Um, was the question of the incorporated cities all in one district versus the other. Uh, I mean, the two maps clearly um, reflected uh, different um, concerns or different coy's. And I just want to make sure that um, that we're on the right track, that the vote that we just took actually. Um, already expresses the majority or quorum opinion, um, and we don't want to revisit that topic. So I see Commissioner Dostal's hand is up, and then Commissioner Inman.
Um, thank you, Chair, uh, uh, Commissioner Garcia, um, you named exactly the things I wanted to start with. Um, the first issue is that, um, I do think, um, the tribal community should be in North County. With what's currently in thirteen A, and that also addresses, um, Commissioner Diaz's comment about. Having this huge East County unincorporated district, so that would kind of take care of two issues.
Can I, can we stop, can we stop right there and just, I'm wondering if this might be, if, if I can, you know, just see a show of hands. As to whether or not that's something that a lot of Commissioners a- agree to. For example, I do, I would like, I, that's what I liked better about map eleven. Um, and if we, you know, maybe that's, that's one thing that we know. And we can, that will provide us some um, information about one of the changes that we would want to make to thirteen A. Can I, is that okay if I stop you right there, and I want you to continue? Tribal reservations who have told us that they want to be part of North County, and we have that list, and map eleven actually. Um. Uh, did that. Um, do we, is that something that we all, how many of us find that? A pro- yes, we'd like to incorporate.
Do you want us to raise our hand in the Zoom, or do you want us to raise our hand?
Maybe like this, because people have their hands raised.
Okay, yeah.
I, can I just ask a question though, because I thought they were already, I thought the, from what we heard in the tri- from the tribes last night, they said that they already voted thirteen? So this is.
We just decide if we a- a- agree that that's something that we'd like to incorporate? Yes.
I, I think so, am I, are we saying that tribes that are already in North County? That are already in the North County District, stay in the North County District, basically?
Correct, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Lot of other tribes too that are down off of Highway eight.
Yeah, so you mean.
We're talking about the North County tribes.
Okay, and I'm for that.
I'm in.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Commissioner Dostal.
Okay.
And someone's capturing that.
I want, I want to, I want to clarify though, that in map thirteen A, it doesn't include Los Coyotes.
Just, we want to.
They would include them.
We want to just thirteen A to include basically what was map eleven before, which had that North County. All those reservations that were in North County, are North County now. Um, but I think it would also include Santa Isabel, which in the current maps is not part of North County. They also said they wanted to be North County, and this brings up the numbers issue, which um, was the second point Rosette raised. And um. I, I think, um. As long as we're within the, the deviation that's, that we can have, which is, you know, ten percent. I think we have to deal with it, because I do not see a way to do that in a way that doesn't split up cities or split up. You know, communities or reservations. Um, so I think for me, it's okay as long as we're within. Um. Within the ten percent and we can make it work, because I don't see how to do that in a way that makes sense to split it up. Um, so that's, that's the end of my comments about North County, thank you.
I would, I would also emphasize up for the record, the criteria that we're using.
Commissioner Diaz, I'm sorry, it's Commissioner Inman's has, has the floor right now, thank you.
For powers of authority between the reses.
Commissioner Diaz, please. Commissioner Inman, you're up.
Yeah, um, so. In principle, I'm okay with moving the boundary back out for the North County. But we do have the first cri- you know, the first criteria is population balance. And that's why that was changed in the first place, is to find a reasonable balancing point. For that North County District to bring populations better into alignment, to increase the rural East County population. And reduce uh, that North County population, uh, so as to improve population balance. The other thing to keep in mind with that, uh, North County District, is there are areas around Escondido. That would like to be moved in because they are right next to Escondido, but because of the city's incorporated boundaries. You know, you see some very jagged lines um, around Escondido, San Marcos, and Oceanside. Those are there because of the city municipal boundaries. That's not an arbitrary line, it's a very clear line, people that are on one side are in the city, people on the other side are currently out of the city. We're following that principle with the boundary, um, but I know that uh, there are proposals to move the boundaries south. So as to smooth out those municipal boundaries, again, that's going against population balance. So, you know, uh, we have to look at both sides of this. Um, and how, we can't continue to increase the population we're putting into that North County District. It, it is getting too large, it's driving our positive deviation. And so at some point, you have to draw a line, and so that's why I don't, I, I think it's a fair balance right now. Uh, the way it is in thirteen A, so, but that's.
Yeah, so Commissioner Inman, I'm wondering if, um. Uh, th- if this is the place to have the conversation about breaking up some of those cities, but I see some, um.
And I would be against breaking up the cities or municipal cities, I don't want to break up Escondido, that. Uh, so I, I guess that's, that's all I would say, and I'll, I'll let you.
Okay, so there's no tolerance for.
Not on my part.
Okay.
Part.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Brown?
Leave this unmuted. Yeah, I agree, I think if you have houses across the street from each other and they're considered, they have the addresses of Escondido and so forth. They should all be considered in that area and not split down the middle of it, because one's incorporated and one's unincorporated area. So I, I believe we've taken care of that though in this map, thirteen A, it looks as though they've come down and grabbed that part of Escondido that was unincorporated. Am I wrong about that?
Yeah, yeah, so we're.
Thirteen A one, in thirteen A one, I'm sorry, Rosette, in thirteen A one, that was, that was done. And uh, uh, it, it was moved in to uh, be with Escondido, but I'm saying is if you're going to move it to the east.
Yeah.
You know, you're going to compound things.
Commissioner Brown, did you have another?
Um, no, I was just saying, I believe that's been taken care of in this thirteen A series that we have.
Right, okay. We're really trying to focus on more of the, of the issue and whether or not. So right now, um, and I don't know, maybe Flo can give us this number, if we were to move. Um, the eastern boundary, and, and I'm not looking at the map in front of me, I'm sorry, to include the North County reservations. Maybe just to Borrego Springs, because Borrego Springs just can stay perhaps in the rural East County, I don't know. I don't know how much population, I don't think it's probably a significant amount to include the North County reservations. And to see where we are now with pop- with the deviation from the six fifty. And while we wait, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, we'll chime in just a minute here.
Okay.
That information.
Commissioner Chen?
Thanks, on the, the topic, I mean, I know our first priority is, is population and balancing. Um, to me though, that's a Boolean criteria, where as long as we're less than ten percent, we're okay, so I'm not saying that, you know. A three percent variation is better than seven, therefore we should make decision over coy's because of that, I don't think so. I think as long as it's below ten, we're good, and I think that's the first priority. Um, as far as North County goes, and this is where most of my interest is, I just like to emphasize again how important Carlsbad is to the North County Districts. How the watersheds that all end up in Carlsbad flow east to west. Um, and I think it's very important for the cities, Oceanside, Vista, and San Marcos, et cetera, it's really important. The airports are really big deal, the hospital districts are really big deal. And so since we've already decided that the tribal lands, and I assume that means Fallbrook and Pendleton all fall into North County. Uh, the North County District now, that really makes it just a point of Escondido versus Carlsbad. And I know we have different opinions. And I know we have differing opinions about that. But that's kind of the issue we need them to decide is which is more important to be in that District Five, Escondido versus Carlsbad. I'm going to go back to, it's a difficult decision. Somebody's going to be unhappy no matter which way we go. And, and I think again, if it's not broke, don't fix it is a good principle for us to abide by. Because things are working fairly well. We heard a lot of people testify saying, hey, we have these great relationships with Escondido. It's really important to us, agricultural, et cetera. All those relationships and the seventy-eight corridor business relationships have all been built with Escondido where it's at now. As far as not being in that district. So having to look at a really, really tough decision of Carlsbad versus Escondido, I would say, and I think it goes back also to, I think we have less chance of being litigated against. If we leave things closer to the way they are now versus making a large change like moving Escondido in, taking Carlsbad out, and then seeing what happens. I think that puts us up and opens us up to more litigation possibilities. So again, for that tough decision, I would say if it's not broke, don't fix it. Let's try and avoid as much litigation as we can. And I know it's a tough decision.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. And, and just to your response, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I think there are some people who believe that it's, it is actually broken now.
More will feel is broken if we do it though.
Commissioner Servin.
Thank you, Vice Chair Garcia. So I agree with Commissioner Chen, the, the question of Carlsbad and, and Escondido and how it fits into a North County District is, is really, I mean, it's, it's, you know, this North County District, we all, we, it sounds like we're all in agreement that it's at least Oceanside Vista, San Marcos. And then, and then it's a question of, okay, what else is it? Is it going to be Carlsbad, Escondido, and then these, this Fallbrook Tribal Lands unincorporated portion? I guess from my point of view, it sounds like, you know, one way, it's, it's not Carlsbad or Escondido. One way to get both Carlsbad and Escondido is to do the seventy-eight corridor and then have the unincorporated and rural portions of the county in a district that shares those characteristics, those unincorporated rural portions. And then, and also just one last thing, I, I don't want to, I also want to remember, remind the commissioner, the commission that the communities of Harmony Grove, Elfin Forest and Eden Valley were also interested in remaining together and united with Escondido. So that's another North County issue.
Yeah, so Commissioner Servin, yeah, thank you. I, I guess I, I want one way perhaps forward on this issue of Escondido, Carlsbad is to determine if what we have is, again, a majority or a quorum of the commission that in voting to adopt thirteen A actually have voted or are in favor of what's reflected in map thirteen A, which is Escondido, North County. That, that, that community that we've heard of, of a district that reflects that as opposed to the I seventy-eight corridor. Is that, rather than continue to hash this out, do you? So again, I think I'm going to ask for people to just raise their hands and, and sort of indicate that they have actually chosen, preferred what's, what's reflected with perhaps some, some changes in, in thirteen A.
Is that a little premature? Should we have people comment first and just say why they prefer on that particular issue? Make comments on that particular issue and then take a vote?
We already didn't vote.
I think, I think that we'll just be repeating ourselves. I'd rather just, let's see what happens. Thirteen A, thirteen A with the, in, yes, with Escondido in North County. Yeah. So we have a quorum there. I think that, that issue is resolved. And I think what isn't resolved, truthfully, and I haven't asked this question before.
Sorry, Commissioner, Coach Garcia, does that, are we, did we vote also to include the, the Fallbrook and Incorporated parts of the?
Yeah, that's exactly what we were talking about. Yes.
Because I just heard the Escondido part.
Thank you. And I see Commissioner Pons, your hand is up and Commissioner Russ, you're waiting patiently. To me, what is left to decide, and we've heard a couple of people who said that the priority is keeping coys together, even if the deviation is, is getting, is, you know, above five percent or whatever. And to me, that, that is perhaps where the, sort of the last thing to discuss in, in, in the North County. But let me hear from Commissioner Pons.
Okay, thank you. To your first question, I don't want to extend the District Five eastward to capture the rest of the Native American reservations and communities. I think that would be too much. The second thing is I would like to focus on consolidating Escondido. Before we make a determination if it belongs in District Three or District Five. So those are the priorities I would like to focus on.
So Commissioner Pons, I appreciate your comments, but I believe those two issues have already been resolved.
Well, I didn't know because I don't know if we decided not to move District Five farther east to capture the rest of the Native American reservations and communities like Los Corrientos.
We call, I call, I asked, I asked for a show of hands.
Yeah, I raised my hand. I raised my hand. So we had a number that said we would not. The number of hands said, no, don't.
We were, we were in favor of it. There were more than nine commissioners in favor of that.
If it flows, I, I don't know if they, I want to hear with that change, how it affects the population. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't think we had voted on it and had a decision, a quorum, because we didn't know the impact on the deviation for District Five. Because it's already over the, the margin. So, I mean, to vote and so we'd say yes, because we already know the focus of District Five is making, is, exceeds the ten percent. So I didn't know we had decided on it with this, with the show of hands. That's all.
I do, if you're.
Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah. Right now, right now, as it's, as it's settled for map thirteen, the overflow on District Five is, is twenty-nine thousand fifty-five. If we go back to map eleven, which is really the, you know, which is really a, the earlier rendition before we, we scooched everything to the west, that overflow is only twenty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-six. So, so actually the overflow is, is, is diminished by going back to.
Map eleven.
The boundaries of commissioner, of map eleven that pushes it out to the east. So I don't, I don't, I, I don't think that's an issue at all.
Thank you. I see.
Map eleven, please, for reference.
And I see Commissioner Dostal, you had a question. Why don't you go ahead? And then we'll hear from John from Flo. Thank you.
I just wanted to respond really quickly. We've already, you know, on the issue of if it's not broken, don't fix it. I know we already decided that Carlsbad versus Escondido by show of hands. But I do want to say that, you know, a lot of people did think it was broken and that's why we're making the change. And the other issue is that less chance of being litigated. What we need to do is figure out what we think is the best map and that it, that follows the criteria and not worry about who's going to sue us. Because like my partner, my legal partner always says, anyone with four hundred dollars in a pen can sue you. So we need to do what's best and not just focus on, oh, be, you know, fear of litigation. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dostal. John, did you want to weigh in?
Yes. So if you were to extend the boundary in District Five for current draft map thirteen to roughly the same as draft map eleven boundary there. It would be a movement of roughly five thousand people, which would increase the overall deviation from six point eight to roughly seven point five percent. If you exclude Borrego Springs, that is around three thousand people who are moving out of that. So it would be around seven point two percent deviation if you only go out as far as Borrego Springs.
Okay, so a pretty insignificant impact, it sounds to me. Thank you.
Very many people out there.
And I still see three hands up. Commissioner Pons. Commissioner Diaz, Commissioner Russ. But Commissioner Russ, did you get a chance to make the comment that you've had your hand up for a while? I don't know if you had a comment.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that, I was looking back to John's point. I was looking back to map eleven, the exact, to get those numbers. But the other, but I did want one other point that Commissioner Pons, I believe this Commissioner Pons brought up. Elfin Forest and Harmony Grove have expressed that they'd act, that they'd like to be either in District Five, which is overpopulated, or in the coastal district, which is not in the calculus right now for our, for our variance calculation. So, so they could, they could go into, into District, into the coastal district instead of the, the eastern, the eastern district.
Thank you, Jack. And I think probably John can tell us quickly. I think that population was pretty insignificant to the Elfin Grove, Harmony Forest, Eden Valley. I know I saw that on the slide. It's under ten thousand people. I think it's like six thousand or something. Commissioner Diaz, oh, John, you have that answer?
Well, I'll, I'll give you, I can get it specifically, but I'll give you the rough is close. It's not that many when you take the sort of western portion of the overall Santa Gita community, Santa Gito Community Plan area, which is sort of encompasses that entire unincorporated area. If you do look at that entire unincorporated area, it is closer to thirty-six thousand. Much of that is caught, population is concentrated more in the eastern portion of that, separate from the Elfin Forest, Harmony Grove, which is more in the western half.
Okay, thank you. And we're, I think we have just a few minutes left. So we're getting close to wrapping up, but Commissioner Diaz, did you have a question or a comment?
I'll save it for after, I mean, I think I'm in agreement that we cannot split Escondido away. But I was just wondering how that would affect the population. So.
What's your, you mean if we took Escondido out of North County?
We, we can, I'm completely opposed of splitting off Escondido from the other cities. So I, I'm not, they've been split off in the past and it would be a violation of.
Okay.
I can't, I can't articulate well right now.
Okay, no problem.
Just wanted to note, I hope before we wrap this up, we can get some information from Flo on the point Commissioner Inman was raising with regard to the general environs around Escondido, the unincorporated areas right there. I'm attracted to the idea of keeping them included, but I, I'm concerned about the numbers and I want to make sure we have that as part of this discussion. I also just wanted to mention, again, I find myself in agreement with Commissioner Dustal regarding litigation. And this is an overall point. If you look at what's happening around the country, there is a high chance of litigation for every redistricting commission. And it's not because redistricting commissions are doing anything wrong. It is a political act and that's perfectly understandable. I completely agree. We need to focus on our mission, our statutory criteria. To that extent, I also wanted to emphasize, I would be very, very strongly opposed to splitting any cities unless it's absolutely necessary after exhausting all of their options. And to my mind, we don't have that in any part of the county. We have ways to work on this and bring it together. But I did want to highlight, if we can talk for just a moment about what the numbers are in and around Escondido, particularly to the southeast. I'd like to bring that out.
Commissioner Inman, you have, did you?
I was just going to say there is one city by, by statute, we have to split, which is San Diego.
San Diego, right.
Yeah. So that's it.
Which is, which is why I raised the issue because, you know, Oceanside is almost a hundred and eighty thousand people, I think. I mean, these cities are getting big and.
But the city of San Diego is in a somewhat different category.
No, no, I know, but when you try to put all these cities together, it makes it very, very hard. And, and when you look at the maps and you hone in on them, you can see that there could be, for example, parts of San, the western part of San Marcos that could move into the coastal district. Anyway, John.
Or if I may, I'll just jump in. I'm sharing my screen and I think Chair Bane, we're discussing this area right here. So I'm going to highlight a couple of things. First, this is San Diego. It extends all the way up here. And then I'm going to click on Escondido. So that's that boundary. So the area we're talking about is this unincorporated area that's between Escondido and San Diego. And in our draft map thirteen A, I think it was number five, and I can pull that up right now. That area was roughly sixty-five hundred. And it was put into number District Five here. So let me get to that. Okay, right here. So this is looking at, this is item number four or five, excuse me. So this is where that portion got moved into District Five. And there was a few other really small minor changes up here and that was just about six thousand five hundred, six thousand six hundred in this area.
So that's unincorporated Escondido.
It's unincorporated county. I don't have information on, you know, if that would be annexed, you know, by San Diego or Escondido, but it's unincorporated. It's between the two municipalities.
So my concern, just to raise it and why I've raised the point of a question about whether or not we would be willing to break some city boundaries is that this is an area that's going to, that we know is going to have more growth over the next ten years. And I, I just was thinking that maybe we might want to not be so close to the, you know, to high end of the, of the deviation in this district if possible. But it sounds to me like there really is, that the, that the priority is to keep communities intact and cities intact. And, and, and not to worry, just, just to make sure that we're under the, the limit for the deviation. And I, Commissioner Servin, I see your hand is up and I think with that, with that, we might try to wrap this, this up and, and move to the next discussion.
Thank you, Co-Vice Chair Garcia. I'm, I'm, I'd just like to point out that if we're deciding now that Carlsbad is not a part of the North County District. And then, so that necessarily means that it's part of the coastal district. And if it is part of the coastal district, then I'm highly concerned as to how it is we're going to deal with, again, the central San Diego, Miramisa, Penasquitas question.
So I, I think there is, we just have to, I, we've, we've thought all of this through, Commissioner Servin, and we think that, that we're going to, we're going to have some flexibility when we get to that. So I.
Can we talk about that flexibility now? Where's it going to come from?
No, it really doesn't make sense to do that. Commissioner Brown?
I was just going to add that, that little area of Escondido that's unincorporated. It's on the east side of that is the San Pasqual Valley, which is very empty of housing and so forth. I don't think there are any plans out there. The Safari Park is out there. So I don't think they're going to extend any farther east than where they are with the houses. But there's definitely a group of houses in there that's, that's part of Escondido, even though it's unincorporated.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to ask how, how much adding those six thousand people in unincorporated Escondido would change the deviation number?
Well, it would offset some of the, you know, population that we added. And maybe John can work on that and we can get an answer in a minute. Commissioner Diaz, we really need to wrap this up. Do you have a quick comment?
Yes, really quickly about the city of Escondido is a very interesting case because as the California Rights, Voting Rights Act, there's some nuances there. And I really want to make sure that we don't split the city, any part of the city boundaries as we're deciding this, any kind of to accommodate for more or less population. And Marguerite, please feel free to chime in here. I know there was a case, a court case on the city of Escondido and.
Thank you, Commissioner Diaz. I, I don't think that's even on the table. So.
Just.
Yeah, I appreciate you putting that on the record. Thank you. So I think we're wrapped up here with the North County. Thank you very much. I, Commissioner, Chair Bane, is there a, a wrap-up comment that you want to make since you've been listening? And I've been a little bit more sort of, do we, do we have?
I wouldn't.
Actually, I would ask. Let me, as I say, you know, Marguerite admonished us to make sure that we had a reasoning down behind decisions. We've made some significant decisions about North County now. And I tried to lay out why I thought Carlsbad should be part of the District Five. I didn't hear any reasoning for.
And I tried to lay out why I thought Carlsbad should be part of the District Five. I didn't hear any reasoning for why Escondido should be. Should we document our reasoning for putting the the tribal lands in and putting Escondido into District Five?
I was about to suggest, and again, I'll welcome the co-Vice Chair Sir Marguerite to weigh in on this, that as part of our summary statement, We include something like a rationale Or context, something along that line. My suggestion was respectfully would be for one of the commissioners who participated in the conversation to take the first shot At reading something that staff can draft in front of us and put up on in a in a Word document.
I wonder if Commissioner Distal might might
And I was, I actually had Lydia in mind, but before that, I'm wondering if we ought to ask Flo or Marguerite if they have anything they want to make sure we consider as we make that statement. I see John's hand up, and I was wondering about that.
Well, so I did want to provide input On what was just asked, which if you were to add that southeast portion of Escondido into
Is that okay if we take that now?
So if you were to do that, in addition to the other move, which is incorporating the Indian reservations and extending that portion out, That move plus that southeast roughly 6,500 people Brings the overall deviation of 13A to 8.2%. The, I think it's important to note that at this point District Five would be over by 31. These numbers are rough. So let's just say 30. It's 31,975. So roughly 32,000 Or 4.8%. And that's on that. So for the high, your high district would be at 4.8%. I'll tell you that's high.
So I'm sorry. I thought we were actually looking at that unincorporated Escondido area to move out of District Five and into The rural East County. They're already in rural East County. I'm sorry.
It is in 13A. It already is. Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Then I think we should probably leave it there.
So can we move on and draft the the summary statement as it were?
I think Commissioner Dustall might be working on it.
I was. I guess I should start. I like to write things before I say them. But I'll go ahead and start since I know we're we're pressed on time. Okay, so far I'm keeping Escondido as part of the North County, including the unincorporated areas And the tribes, the North County Tribal Areas. The reasoning Is that there was public
By the way, so it's moving it into it. It's not there now.
Sorry, I mean, on 13A. So moving then. However, you want to put it with risk with respect to 13A. And yeah, and then including the unincorporated areas in our county tribal areas. And the reason is there was public testimony That Escondido Is part of A minority Socioeconomic And agricultural Community of interest With North County. We also heard, I guess, period. We also heard from the tribal nations That they are part of this North County Community of Interest With respect to Shared Concerns Including There were, I guess it's economic Social And fire Concerns. And I welcome anybody to improve on that.
I'd add the word. I would add the word historic in both sentences.
Yeah. I also want to. Oh, I'm sorry. There's some hands up.
I would put historic before minority is a part of a historic.
Do we need minority since we're supposed to avoid picking based on race?
I think minorities can be a community of interest.
Commissioner Chen, it's it's that we can't make that the sole or the predominant factor. It needs to be related to communities of interest. I I I think it's a stylistic point at this stage. For right now, I think it's more important to just get something written down. If we were to go final in any of these statements And include them final for the record. Yeah, I think we need to have a short chat about that to just make sure the commission understands. But for our purposes right now, from my perspective across the board, I think we can have it in there.
Thank you, Commissioner Distal. Commissioner Diaz and Commissioner Pons, if this is about helping us For this for this record. Commissioner Diaz? No? Commissioner Pons?
Yes, for the record, there were a number of community of interest testimonies that said That Escondido should not be in North County, should be in East County. So for me to really get an appreciation for those comments, Just to look at a thematic map where some individuals said they would rather be in East County instead of North County. That would really give me a quantifiable appreciation for those comments. So can we use the thematic map to bring up those themes regarding the discussion surrounding Escondido and where it belongs?
I I actually, I actually think that What we heard more of was testimony that Escondido belonged in North County. We heard from a Latino community of interest, many, many of them who said Escondido with several cities and including Fallbrook, Bonsole, that they created a That they were a significant and growing Population that wanted to be able to have their Voice, you know, protected. And I actually wanted to point out that our demographers In a previous meeting when they Presented on some of their RPV analysis, mentioned that there were two Significant sort of compact areas of Latino population, one in the south that we've heard so much about, And one in the north, and and they mentioned specifically Escondido, Oceanside, Fallbrook, and they said while they're not a majority there yet, you need to pay attention to that. Do not dilute voters in these Latino voters in North County. So I don't know if we want to put that in there, but it's something that I had written down in my notes, and that was That was driving my own Preference for a North County that That that's reflected in map 13A.
I do understand that. I just don't want to disregard the voices that said that they didn't want to be in North County. And, you know, I can't recall over 1,000 comments, the numbers that said they would or did not Did or did not. So I just think it deserves some sort of review of the number of comments that said that The community of interest in Escondido did not want to be part of North County. I think it deserves consideration. And let's not just drop anchor and make a decision on put that line in there without juxtaposing against The individuals that did not want to be part of North County, because there were voices that said they didn't want to be part of North County. They wanted to be part of East County. So we just need to take that under consideration.
So let's have if we can have Flo as task Flo or staff to kind of look that up and see if they can After the break at some point, give us some information about that.
I'll just have to say that that is a pretty That's a very qualitative exercise because there aren't specific themes addressed to this specific issue. There are Themes about keep communities together, and there are tags with Escondido. And I will say that there can be multiple areas tagged as well as multiple themes tagged for a comment. I personally would not be comfortable providing any sort of true quantitative Number as to those comments with the sort of review that we have. That's a just a bit more of an exercise that I think as a demographer, we can we can provide in the amount of time that That we have here.
Back back to the comment that's that these are not statistically significant. We have pre million people in San Diego County. We've got, you know, Hundreds of comments or maybe even 1,000. They are not statistically significant. And by counting numbers, I think we do ourselves a disservice And saying, well, we had more comments that said this than that, because they are not significant. If just somebody yelled louder, I don't think we want to go with the squeaky wheel gets the grease Reasoning. I think we used the public comment to identify themes. And then we make our decisions based on identified themes. I don't think this was a vote by how many people said what. That's that would be my take on this. Because I don't think that's defensible.
Yeah, I'm with you, Commissioner Chen. I just don't want to disregard the small voices When it's overshadowed by the large number of
But Commissioner Pons, what we're doing here is we're actually just trying to, for the record, Describe or state what the rationale was for the vision that we made. I don't think we need to Actually state why we're disregarding, and I don't think we're disregarding, but that we just I I don't think we can attend to every single Comment that was made. I think we're we need to focus on the The overall, you know, fundamental reasons that we moved in this direction.
I do understand that, Commissioner Garcia. I just want to make sure that we Consider all of the comments regarding Escondido, and that we don't disregard the comments. And I'm saying that for the record, because What I'm looking at is for the record. So I want to go on record that I want to consider The other comments to sort of contradict that second justification on the why we should keep Map 13A in the discussion. That's all. This is for the record. My comments are for the record.
Okay, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Pons. Commissioner Servant, Hanson, Diaz, and we're Really like to wrap this up.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia, I'm I'm sorry. We are approaching 45 minutes on this.
Okay.
I well, I just want to step in from an overall perspective. I'm happy to follow your lead and to let and to allow commissioners to speak. The longer this goes on, the more time crunch we're going to have later today. And so I both the co-Vice Chair and the commissioners to keep that very clearly in mind.
So I we haven't heard from Commissioner Hanson. I would like to hear from her. And then and then we should move on because we've resolved the issues. I would like to add, however, To this statement, one another statement that is specifically about the Latino cohort, as I mentioned earlier, That wanted, because I believe that that's important, and it's it's not quite called out in what we have so far. Commissioner Hanson?
I just want to point out that the term historic Historical is the correct term because historic just means important. But we're talking here about a historical event that occurred 20 years ago, that was mentioned over and over last night. And has been from the very beginning. We knew that 20 years ago, that area was gerrymandered for political gain. And that part of the reason we exist is to right that wrong. So you changed that to historical.
Absolutely.
And I think we also have to say at the beginning of our report somewhere that all 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 opinions have been considered Individually and as groups, and we have made our decision based on the preponderance of Community input and the requirements of our job. Because that's what what Mr. Pons is saying is going to happen every time we make a decision. We're going to have to overrule somebody's opinion. So.
Thank you. I I agree. Thank you. Well, that will move on. Thank you. We'll
Just want to make sure.
Vice Chair Garcia, if I may, I I would just consider because of the Nature of this, these communities, that you consider adding the Language that this is, these are contiguous And compact communities. We're not reaching out Tentacles to grab populations that are not geographically Related already. And I believe that that is would be a a good addition to Your consideration of the proper positioning Of the rural areas and and Escondido.
With the cities. Okay. Okay, so can
Race, it's like as it
That might suggest same part of a historical Contiguous and compact minority sociological and agricultural community of interest with North.
Thank you. Our Does that? Does that work?
Yes.
So Commissioner, Co-Vice Chair Katerina? You're up.
Are we done with North County now?
Yes.
Did we not talk about Elfin Forest?
No, we did.
We didn't come to a decision on that?
There They're going to be unified either in North County or in the Central Coastal District.
Do we need to write that into the description, Rosette? Or are we good?
Why would they go in the Central Coastal District?
Because they said they would like to be in either District Three or District Five. That is exactly what they said. They want to be unified, and they would Could go either in five or three.
And five is already overpopulated, so going to three.
Yeah.
Do we need to add that to our summary statement, Rosette? Or do you want to kind of address that later?
I I think the actual sort of mapping, I mean, this is going to help us With the motions, and maybe we're going to have to play with that a little bit.
Okay.
So I don't know.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted just want to clarify. Okay, I did write it down, so it's in my notes for whatever that's worth. Okay, so I'm going to talk about East County, and I and I'd like to ask all of our commissioners to respect each other's time And not talk over each other, and and hopefully we can get through this as quickly as possible. I think Rosette had the harder job going first. I think it'll probably be a little easier. Because now we're kind of getting the feel for what kind of what we're looking to achieve in this In this discussion. So to move on quickly, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, I'm going to talk about East County. I had, and and as you know, with East County, there are a number of issues. And and the biggest one, I believe, is population and how to balance that population. We need to address how far west we're willing to go. We need to talk frankly about what to do about El Cajon. This is an important community in East County. It has been Part of East County for many years. Excuse me, frog in my throat. And 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 we need to talk about that. Do we do we include it in East County, or do we include it as part of a minority-majority district? Do we? And additionally, again, I think as Rosette did in the previous section, do we talk about dividing it? And and then we need to talk, and this is in conjunction with the southern border, but I think we do need to have the discussion. How far south do we go? In addition to how far west do we go? So I will tell you, you know, my perspective and my interesting story, my husband grew up In El Cajon, and he he said, these people, they're they're part of East County. I mean, that's how they see themselves. But I think what we see in our in our discussions Is is that that community is changing. And and we have immigrants coming in. We have members, people of color. These are important things for us to consider. So 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 as we look at East County, and we look at El Cajon, we have to think about How that affects these other groups that we're talking about. And and I I am Very excited to get this conversation started. I think I think it's something that's going to really help us if we can come to terms With what to do in this area. And I would certainly welcome, after we finish these issues, if anyone has any other issues they want to talk about, that would be fine, too. Um, and I would certainly welcome, after we finish these issues, if anyone has any other issues they want to talk about, that would be fine too. I see, um, Commissioner Dostal has her hand up. Um, if, if that's okay with the commission, I'd like to ask her to please go, go first and then we'll hear from Commissioner Servin and then Commissioner Inman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Katerina. Um, I, on the question of El Cajon, um, over the Thanksgiving weekend, I was catching up on, um, on commit, on public comments, the, the ecomments we received. And one of the things I noted, and it was interesting because it came out a lot last night, was, um, I think we took the BIPOC, uh, community submitted map wholesale in a lot of our maps without really considering whether, um, that map actually spoke for, uh, uh, um, one community. That's actually one, um, if, uh, immigrant and refugee community. So that's something that especially last night after hearing more, because there was a letter from a Caldian, um, resident of East County that said, and it had nothing to do with, I don't even, I think it was even before the map we got on the, from the BIPOC, um, group. Um, and they said, you know, we have a Caldian community that is in El Cajon and all throughout East County and El Cajon is super important. And we've also heard from, I think all of us, everyone, you know, um, historically just thinks of East County as El Cajon and eastward. Um, so that's one point. I just think we really need to rethink whether it was appropriate to have just wholesale adopted that map into all our maps and not considering leaving El Cajon and East County. That also addresses the population issue because El Cajon is, I think, over a hundred thousand people. So, um, that adds a lot of population and then we don't have to keep grabbing from other parts of the, um, of the county to try to grab some population for, for East County. So that's my first thought. My second thought is that I do think that there, there's not one border community all along the border. I think there's, you know, two separate border communities. We heard a lot from people and again, fire issues are huge issue in East County. And so that's something they have much more in common with East County than, um, Chula Vista, for example. Um, and, and so that's something I think we should have as part of East County is the southern border, eastern side. Um, and, uh, I had one more point that now I can't remember, so I'll stop.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and I would, I would also, uh, ask everyone to consider when we're talking about the BIPOC, um, community is there is a reason that, that we were given that they need to be intact and that is because of the translation concerns. So if, if we decide to put El Cajon into East County, we are then dividing up the translation issues. And, and this is something we, we should consider because it is a considerable problem. Um, but that's, that's, and that's why we did it, right? And that is the reason. But now let's talk more about, um, El Cajon and see, I'd like to see how the rest of the commissioners feel. Commissioner Servin, were you, or did you, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. So, uh, so thank, thank you, uh, co-vice chair Katerina, and I appreciate the comments, Commissioner Dostal. Um, I, I am in support of maintaining the integrity of, of the district, um, that includes El Cajon right now. I think that I, I don't necessarily consider the process of the creation of this, of this district and our fidelity to it as a wholesale, adoption of, of, of one group's, um, preferred map. I think, you know, it was, it was originally presented to us by one group, but, um, over the course of months and, and hundreds of comments, many other groups have affirmed their support of, of this map as well. And so I'm, I'm in support of keeping El Cajon the way we have it drawn. Um, my, and you know, again, my primary concern with the East County is, you know, kind of the communities I'm most familiar with, Penasquitas and Miramesa. And I am curious how it is that, um, we, my understanding is, you know, Miramesa and Penasquitas ended up in this East County district sort of as an afterthought in creating what was the prior iterations of map thirteen. And so I think we need to have a little more intention in how we're aligning the western boundaries of this supposed East County district. Because if we're saying that we don't want to include Hakumba Boulevard, Campo Patrero in, uh, a district that includes Chula Vista and Imperial Beach, I'm curious as to why we're okay with including those communities with Surranta Valley and Miramesa instead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Inman.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so first I don't, uh, I would be opposed to splitting El Cajon, the municipal boundaries in any way to try to resolve these issues. Again, it's not large enough that it needs to be split. Uh, we also have had various proposals where we have changed that initial file that we got that was the BIPOC, uh, El Cajon all the way into five. We have made adjustments. So as to move unincorporated areas that were included in that map back into the unincorporated planning areas. For example, Bostonia and some of the other areas around there so that we have made it more consistent with an East County oriented, um, uh, district to take some of the unincorporated areas out. And I think that's very important. Um, I do agree, uh, with Commissioner Servin, but that district, we have heard a lot of testimony that does tie this community together in various ways and various important ways, um, that, uh, reflect the evolving nature of the, of, of the population, uh, within that area. Uh, regarding the, uh, East County district pushing west in the, uh, Penasquitos, Rancho Penasquitos, Miramar, Miramesa that, uh, uh, does represent a community of interest that we need to, to, uh, take into account. I agree with that. There are ways that we could actually adjust some of the areas there um, to potentially even pull more of that community of interest into East County. I understand that's our counter to, uh, to what Commissioner Servin would prefer to see. But I know if you go down into convoy and the area around convoy, they did express, there was an e-comment where they, uh, convoy planning, uh, group did express an interest of moving into the East County district because it did include those other, uh, communities of interest that they were aligned with. And so I think that there are clearly things that we can do, uh, with that border, uh, uh, that would help improve the cohesiveness of those communities that are represented in that area. I completely agree with that. And so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Diaz, then Commissioner Brown.
Yes, thank you. Um, there is a lot of history connecting, making this a, a, a very, um, important, uh, community of interest in, in El Cajon, and that is the refugee and immigrant, um, communities. And I really want to point that out that there was much testimony, even since the very early days that we've deliberated on this map to define that well as a community of interest. And I think, um, the way that, I mean, it's between both maps that, um, it has remained, um, contiguous and it's also including other areas like Lemasa, Lemon Grove, uh, City Heights, which actually City Heights, because I grew up in City Heights. I have very personal connection myself and I've seen for the last forty years the dynamic, uh, connection between City Heights and El Cajon. And, and so because of service, because of shared houses of worship, services, social ties, familial ties. And so to break out El Cajon is, would cut that out completely. So, um, I want to go back and not forget the VRA analysis.
Okay, can you move on? On second, Commissioner Diaz, because we are going to talk about that area. What we're really now to talk about is, is East County. And so, so I, I, I hear from you that, that you want to maintain the BIPOC borders as they are. And that's, that's.
Yes, as they are. And then as to get to Servin's point about how, how far west, I, I'm opposed to pushing that far west. We have to really think about, you know, it seems like we've left Miramesa, Penasquitos, out of the, out of the picture here. And I think they need, if we could make adjustments, as Commissioner Inman said. Um, but I just, I'm not, I'm not certain we can get to our, our population ideal.
Well, that, so that's really the next thing, right? Um, is, is the discussion of the population. So, uh, Commissioner Brown, and then I think John wants to say something.
Okay, I have a couple of things to, um, consider for, um, moving in and out of District Three. I think Benita, which has been put into District Three, should, belongs to Chula Vista and District One. So we can move that back into District One.
Okay, so we, we shouldn't be, um, going into that much detail, moving things about right now. I'm sorry. Um, just we really need to add population, not take away. So this is about East County.
Well, the adding is going to be El Cajon.
Okay, so you're going to say add El Cajon. Okay.
Yeah, and then that's a huge add. So, um, to make that possible, uh, Benita could come out of, uh, D3 to La Vista. And I, I'm looking at trying to maybe make, um, the, uh, what was the Pana map? Instead of going horizontal, have it go vertical where it would come up and capture, um, Miramar, Miramesa, Penasquitos possibly, uh, Scripps Ranch. I don't know what the population is of each one of those little areas.
Okay. All right. We can talk about those when we get to the coastal section.
Okay, and there's another area, just a second, um, that, uh, the map I'm looking at is map thirteen A, one to six, and it shows Rancho Santa Fe in D3. And I don't, I think that should be in the coastal area. So you can get some space there too.
Okay, how about, how about you, John? What do you have?
I just wanted to offer some, uh, population numbers that might be helpful when you're talking about El Cajon. So the total population of the incorporated municipal boundaries of El Cajon are, is one hundred six thousand five hundred and eighty-five. The, uh, I think it's important to note that the unincorporated communities surrounding El Cajon are combined, actually have a, a higher population. Um, so this includes the Bostonia CDP, which has a population of sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-two. The Spring Valley Community Planning Area, which I'm using the complete, community planning area boundary, which does include La Presa, Alex. So the community planning area is actually that entire area. That altogether has sixty-five thousand four hundred and twenty. And then the other one I'll mention is the Valle de Oro Planning Area, which I know is more thought of as Rancho Santa Hito, or sorry, Rancho San Diego. But if you do include that entire planning area, that is forty-three thousand one hundred and eighteen. The total population of El Cajon and all of these unincorporated communities that, you know, we've been hearing about is two hundred thirty-two thousand and sixty-five. So there is a, this area does have a, a, a large amount of population. So I just, I want to highlight that for now and I, I'll just say that I have played around with certain scenarios and seeing what things do when you take some of the bigger populations and move them. Uh, at some point, if that is something you're interested in seeing, if it becomes helpful, I do have some things available to show. But for now, I'd just like to offer those population numbers.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you. Um, I, so I also would want to avoid splitting El Cajon. Um, I do, I would be, um, open, however, to considering moving El Cajon, um, east into the East County. I think it, um, I, I think that decision is somewhat analogous to the sort of decision, tough decision we had to make in North County, um, vis a vis Carlsbad and Escondido. So I think it's something we should give some serious thought to. Doing that opens up a lot of possibilities and a lot of flexibilities, um, in, um, the coastal district, if you will. And with map eleven and thirteen A, which was derived from map eleven, there was a, um, a motion that asked for that map to incorporate the AAPI, uh, communities of interest. And apparently it didn't do a very good job of that. So it's something I'm interested in doing. And one of the reasons that I would consider moving, um, El Cajon, um, into the East District not, but also because I think that we heard a lot of testimony about the historic nature of El Cajon. And I know that there's an emerging trend, but maybe, um, it still belongs for now in the East County. And, um, the only caveat to that, and I know we're not talking about that right now, but would be, um, to be sure that we protect that, um, BIPOC community that, um, that we have. And, but I, I believe that in other variations that we've seen where we've looked, uh, elsewhere to, to grab population that we can create, um, a BIPOC community we, and that will still have an ability to elect that currently exists in map thirteen.
Okay, on, uh, Commissioner Ross, are you ready?
I am, I guess, ma'am. I, I too, I think it'd be wise to, uh, put those hundred thousand plus people in El Cajon into, um, into the, um, East County. So, uh, because East County, we don't really have an overpopulation, um, or, or, you know, the numbers are not, um, it can, it can absorb, it can absorb those. But then you, you, you could, to Commissioner Brown's point, you could start moving north in, uh, District Two to, uh, to replace that, to, um, displace population in, uh, in the East County district and put it into the, um, uh, into the, um, IPOC, um, district, which is. Yeah, okay. So, so I think, I think that's really workable. I think it's very workable. And, um, um, a- actually, I would, I would, I would really, uh, uh, suggest that everybody go to the public submitted, uh, map twenty, uh, map twelve, which actually does this. And, and there's good numbers. There's very good numbers, very good, um, very good shapes there.
Okay, um, Chair Bane.
Thank you. Um, John, let me confirm my math. Are you saying that the unincorporated areas around El Cajon come to a hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and eighty or so?
No.
That's what I'm wondering. What, what, those communities that he listed, including the Villarreal area?
Yeah, and you, it, it's also important to note that it, that also included Bostonia, which is already part of D3. Bostonia has a population of sixteen thousand nine forty-two. So you would need to subtract that if you were looking at using those to add population because that is already in there.
And that takes you to somewhere in the neighborhood of hundred and eight thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm only flagging that for, well, for a couple of reasons. Number one, something I just can't get off my mind about why El Cajon may already be past the tipping point, as it were, of being, of, uh, how much it's still the gateway to the East County, as some of the public commentators said. We heard over and over again that one of the characteristics of East County is that their supervisor is their only elected official. That is not true in the city of El Cajon and hasn't been. In addition, I'm focusing on those areas, including Bostonia, but also the areas that could be moved that in terms of population come around over a hundred thousand, so comparable to the El Cajon municipality. But have that, meet that same argument that East County residents are making. Um, for me, uh, I can't say I'm a lifelong resident, but I've been going in and out of El Cajon for twenty years. And when I compare what I see, who I'm interacting with, what events I attend, it has changed dramatically. I think it's actually a compliment to some of the longer established communities. And I'll defer to Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Diaz on how refugee immigrant communities settle. But I think it's fascinating to hear how the Caldian community that's had people there for a much longer period than some of the other groups are so present in East County, not just in and around El Cajon, but going out to Campo. Uh, and I think that's another success story that we should all be proud of for our county. And it's not us as a commission. It's for the residents there that they've had, seen that integration and taking advantage of opportunity. So a long way of saying, I'm still confident we can find solutions, uh, of, on the topics Commissioner Servin and Commissioner Inman which sits, we're talking about, perhaps by looking at how, uh, the current D2 on thirteen A, the BIPOC corridor could be moved, uh, slightly north, uh, for adjustments and address some of those concerns. But when I think through the community of input, the community of interest input we've heard, I'm fairly convinced that there are very, very strong cases for how the community of interest in El Cajon itself relate directly to the rest of that BIPOC corridor, to that proposed D2. And how. and how the other issues in quote-unquote "the Miramesa" area, which I don't consider to have just been slapped together. I think that goes back to Map 11 and to a very explicit comment that Map 11 was created to absorb AAPI input. I don't think any of that's been ignored. Final comment, I know there's been a lot of consideration about whether we took BIPOC community input at face value and simply accepted it. I, for one, did not. I've seen El Cajon as a very, very, very interesting issue with lots of input from all sides. But I have, after weighing it from the beginning, I really do believe El Cajon is best served, and the county is best served, by having El Cajon in the proposed D2 in the BIPOC corridor. Thanks.
So before we take any second comments, and we're running out of time here on our time schedule, and I do want to try to keep us on track, is there anyone who hasn't commented on, on East County that would like to say something? I don't see anyone. And I want to just run through this. So this is the tricky part when we have to sum up. Right now, based on my calculations, and the people who have commented, we're split between considering moving El Cajon or maintaining the BIPOC community. So I would like to, oh, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Garcia if she has something she wants to add before I go forward.
I just had actually a sort of a specific question, but I, we haven't actually taken a show of hands. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do.
But my, can I just, I have a specific question for John, and that is, when he was talking about moving this 100,000-plus community population from the unincorporated area into East County, can you, and you don't have to give it to us now, that, those people are coming from the Green, from D2 and D1 mostly, I'm just curious where they're coming from. That's all. Thank you.
Oh, I'm not, I'll just say, I don't mean to suggest that I'm saying moving anybody. I was saying, what I was trying to say is that if you were using the numbers that I gave you to consider movements to 13A, you would have to subtract the population from the Bostonia CDP, because that is already included in D3.
Right, no, 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 I know, but you, okay, thank you.
Yes, right now, Spring Valley is in the BIPOC community.
And so that's my question.
Yeah.
Where, what districts would, would the, would the potential population, would the population be coming from if we were to make those potential moves? Is it all coming from D2, or is some of it from D2? It sounded like some of those from D1. And I don't want to get, I want to move this conversation along. I thought that was a simple question.
Yeah, I think, I think Spring Valley may be split between the two, between the, the planning area and the planning community. So we can talk more about that when we get to the South Bay conversation. And I think, and I, and I appreciate you bringing that up, John, and I think David's points are appropriate. Sonia, is there something you would like to add, just quickly?
Quickly, I would like this commission to really emphasize the VRA analysis that we received yesterday, that actually, you know, with the original 2011 supervisory districts, there was already racially polarized voting, and then evidence that groups voted in blocks and never had their candidate, preferred candidates elected. So I really, really want to emphasize that the, the, going back to the original district lines is not in the best interest legally for this commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's have a show of hands for, and we're gonna do this simple. I think I'm gonna do it two ways. So the first is, who wants to make, keep El Cajon? Let's, let me rephrase it. Who wants to put El Cajon into East County District? Show of hands. Okay, I see three. And, and can I assume the remainder? Do not. Okay, can I ask another question? Who would consider moving, no, the unincorporated areas surrounding El Cajon, such as Spring Valley, Casa de Oro, Bostonia is already there? Would, would, so can we have a show of hands on who would consider moving those communities into D2 to balance population? I would, so there's one. Okay, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
Sorry, that's the question. I didn't understand.
Oh, sorry. Would you consider moving the unincorporated communities of Casa de Oro and Spring Valley, the entire planning area into D2 to help balance the population?
And Rancho San Diego, right?
Yes.
Do you mean moving them into the East County District?
You mean East County?
Yes. They're already in D2. D3 is the East County. Is that what you're saying?
Sorry, East County. I'm sorry, it's confusing. Okay, so a count of hands, who would consider moving the unincorporated into East County? All right, so 1, 2, 3, 4. I count four, five.
No, no, more than that.
All right, I don't know if I can see everyone's hands, and I have Ken. Oh, Arv, I didn't see you. Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and me is 9. Okay, so that's 9. Okay, any, any, any interest in splitting El Cajon? No, okay. And any interest in continuing discussions on moving the boundary west? It seemed like that was a no. Well, we've already moved the boundary west a little bit. And, and we talked about this Commissioner Servin. How much do we, do we want to bring up the conversation of moving the boundary to the west? Because we only had two or three people comment on it.
Wait, are we saying that we're not going to consider this westward edge of the East County District?
Well, would, do we need to consider it? Do we need to consider the westward edge?
Do you think that when, because we're gonna be adding population from the unincorporated areas, that that will allow us actually to maybe move some of those western borders? In other words, move some of the coastal district back out to offset the gains that we just got?
Amy, could I make a suggestion? Treat that, maybe we could capture that one as a summary question.
Okay. And then the last, the last question was regarding the border. So do we want to keep the border as it is with the, with the East County border and a, and a, and a South Bay border? And I only got, I mean, I didn't really get any comments on that, but I just want to make sure it was one of the issues that has come up. So are there any commissioners who would, would be interested in changing the South Bay border, the south, south border for East County? So 2, okay. Okay, I think we can move on to summary statements, staff. Does, is anybody interested in helping craft a summary statement here? So I think, Rosette, do you want to take a stab, or do you want me to?
Sure, well, I wish I had been writing down what Commissioner, what Chair Bane said, because I think he provided, and at least convinced me about why El Cajon needs to, you know, would not be moved to East County. And I think that was the major decision that we made, is that El Cajon will not be in the, the rural East County District.
For consistency sake, I think maybe for this summary statement, we should be focused on what we're affirming. And then when we get to the BIPOC corridor, include that. So for this statement, I think that, that, if I understood things correctly, the summary statement would be something like, maintain East County as depicted, I'm going to refer to a map, in 13A, comma, with the additions of unincorporated areas around El Cajon. Olivia, can you do a better job of this, or did you, okay? Let me stop, let me put a period there, because I want to get to the summary question. And maybe just a new paragraph, question, colon, what to do with regard to the western boundaries and the AAPI community of interest? That's just an initial stab.
My only comment, Chair Bane, to that was, didn't we already decide that East County was gonna change to add the, as depicted on Map 13A? We were gonna add the tribal communities up north to District 5?
Ah, very good point, yes. Yeah, so after the additions of unincorporated areas around El Cajon and Commissioner Dustle, do you want to capture that?
And moving the tribal areas in northern east, in the northeast into District 5.
Excuse me.
Amy, back to you to run the discussion. I see you've got hands.
Um, okay, Ken, would you like to add something to the statement?
Yeah, I was just, I think the clarifying point was, we're moving the unincorporated areas into District 5, and I believe that that's captured now with this statement.
Yep, okay.
So that's it, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Did you include also the unincorporated portion of Escondido? That's going into District 5 from District 3?
I think we should include that, David.
Yeah, I don't consider myself having the pen on this. I think, I'm, I'm a little, I would ask Flo to clarify, if we are working from 13A, is that a move?
Yes, it would be. So as we discussed with that North County discussion, I think I had two points. The one is currently recorded with the tribal areas in Northeast, and the second was moving the unincorporated portion southeast of Escondido into District 5. So I agree with Commissioner Brown.
Perfect, good language, Alex. We'll make you a commissioner.
You write the next statement.
Okay, and then Commissioner Servin, and then I think we're done.
Can we add to the question? It's, right now it reads, what to do with regard to the western boundaries and the API communities of the community of interest and the communities of Miramesa and Rancho Penastitas?
In the question?
Correct, so it would end API community of interest and the communities of Miramesa and Rancho Penastitas. We did receive a letter from them yesterday, after all.
Okay, one last thing, Sonia, and then we're, we're gonna move on to central, central county.
Thank you. Just unincorporated areas around El Cajon, can you please specify which community, community planning areas? Because those are gonna be important.
Yeah, Casa de Oro.
Or write them, I wonder if, them in there.
Yeah.
Sorry, I believe it would be Valle de Oro.
Okay, that's fine. It's hard for me to see it on my map.
It might be easier for John, in fact, to read them, because he's been working on it and explained it well before.
So it would be Valle de Oro and Spring Valley. And that covers everything, and that is in part because of the, and Alex, can you just double check me? But I'm quite certain it will cover everything because of the overlapping boundaries. So those are the largest. There are other areas. There is the Spring Valley CDP. There are other things within that, but those two, I believe, cover the entire area that is not already within District, the East District in 13A.
Are we gonna add in, yeah, Rancho San Diego too, now that?
I think that's included in Valle de Oro planning, but Alex, can we?
Okay.
Yeah, I can confirm. Those two planning areas include the following CDPs. Rancho San Diego, Casa de Oro, Mount Helix, Spring Valley, and La Presa.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
That answers my question.
And I do want to note for the record, although we don't need it in this question, but I want to note here for the record, this is in particular with due regard to the inputs we've received from a wide variety of commentators, including with regard to the community of interest in the BIPOC corridor. I'm only saying that because I want to be very, very conscious, and we can talk about this when we get to that part of the discussion of the inputs we had that did include those areas in the BIPOC corridor.
Do we, David, I hate to bring this up, because I really want to move on, but do we want to say, do we want to say, you know, mentioning, well, I guess we say they're unincorporated areas, so perhaps that's.
Again, I, I think, right, I think we'll talk, we can record it for the record as an affirmative statement when we get to that region, whether it's South, or, or later on. We don't have to capture everything in my mind in every summary statement that we want for the record. We just should capture the rationales when we can.
Okay, great. All right, back to you, Rosette.
Thank you. So we're going on to South County, and I only, we only identified two specific questions in the South County. And one, I think we just actually already resolved, which is whether or not that district should be what we were calling a border district. In other words, would that district go all the way east to the eastern border, to Imperial County? So I think we've already resolved one question. And the second question had to do with, this, this district is underpopulated by about 12,000 people. I don't know where it is currently in Map 13. I'd have to look. And I have been suggesting that we add Coronado back into this district. It has been in this district. It does not impact the ability to elect. And it fixes, it again opens up the possibility that we'll have a little bit more flexibility north in the coastal district, and perhaps even in the BIPOC district. And I think it keeps us from having to justify contiguity in a way that's just not as straightforward and obvious as we might like. So that's the question, one question, hopefully, I'll, I'll, we'll open up to comments. Jack, Commissioner Russ?
Yeah, that's right, you call me Jack, that's fine, that's fine. Actually, that would help our variance too, because District 1 was the other, you know, the bookend of the variance. Of course, I don't know what District 5 looks like now that we've changed that, but it will help the variance if we do that. So I, I'm, I agree, so with that, plus the, the continuity problem, I, yeah, I'm kind of of that opinion as well.
Thank you, Jack. Commissioner Pons?
Totally agree with you, Commissioner Garcia, for, you know, making Coronado part of District 1 because of those communities of interest that are military-focused. The second thing is, it does help the over and under for District 1, because they are underwater now, and I think bringing Coronado into the District 1 will help us with those numbers. So yeah, I think that's what Commissioner Russ was emphasizing.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
I completely agree with Commissioner Pons, that, that's, you know, North Island Navy base, and it's a, it would mix really well with all the other Navy bases that are over on the national city side. So I think we ought to keep, keep it, keep that in mind as being a good fit. So I agree, I think it should be part of District 1.
Thank you. Commissioner Diaz?
I'm actually on the fence about this one, and I would love to see, know if, if Coronado was, were to be included in D1. What, how does that affect the Western boundary of the East County District that we just talked about? And maybe this needs to be discussed when we raise that question, but I don't know if Flo's ran other scenarios, um, to see how that would work.
If I can chime in, I'm going to chime in somewhat generally here and just say that by moving Coronado into D1, it does add some flexibility to the map. However, the area of the Western, of the East County boundary that moves furthest west is, is north, right? So, it's not in the area that is sharing a boundary with D1. So, the moves that will require are going to impact other districts. There's not a direct change between D1 and D, D, um, sorry, between D1 and the East County because the significant population is not located in the, in the southern, in the eastern portion, right? You have to move up to that more populated area. So, it, I, I, what I'm trying to say is it does afford more flexibility, but it's not a straightforward swap, and at some point, we'll illustrate, be able to illustrate that.
If I may, can I just add to that? Um, I'm, I'm just going to reference this in terms of, uh, draft map thirteen A. So, uh, this would be moving Coronado into the blue District One, that's about twenty-two and a half thousand. And I think Commissioner Diaz, what you're getting at is the, the idea of what we just said before, moving Spring Valley community planning area, which is including La Presa's, uh, CDP. That would be going from District One, blue, into District, uh, East County, yellow. And that's about thirty-five to thirty, thirty-five and a half, thirty-six thousand. So, it affords some movement, like John said, but it's kind of eaten up by that, uh, because we've got to make sure District One isn't too.
Alex, before we leave that map, and I'll, Rosette, I'll ask permission for the floor for just a moment. The section of District Two directly just south of Lemon Grove and E, and west of La Presa, can you give us a population figure for that area? For Paradise Hills and?
Paradise Hills, Skyline, Encanto neighborhoods, just a second.
Yeah, let's see. So, yeah, particularly, I think, Skyline, Paradise Hills is a San Diego community planning area, right? So, that area?
That's sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eleven, and then the Encanto, Encanto neighborhoods is forty-eight thousand, six hundred and five. So, that, those two combined are, are very heavily populated.
Thank you. And, uh, Commissioner Diaz, was that helpful? I, I certainly was helpful to me. Did you get your question answered?
I guess I, I was looking more at the other, uh, boundary up.
So, at this point, what we're really trying to do again is focus on the, on the sort of the, the principle and not so much on the, on the mapping. And I, I, I recognize that sometimes we do need to look at the map a little bit, and so that's why you are doing that, but we don't want to get too much into discussing the maps, because if we can, if we can, um, agree on principles, then we can work out the details later. Commissioner Servin, uh, Commissioner Larson, Hanson, and then, uh, Chair Bain?
Thank you, Co-Chair by, uh, Co-Vice Chair Garcia. I mean, thank you, Rosette. Um, you, you know, we already decided on one map, why don't we just talk about the map? I mean, you know, if Sonia, I, I think it's, it, you know, framing the conversation in terms of the map that we decided on will get us to a place where we need to go faster. So, I think we can, we should do that if we can. Secondly, um, I would like to know, are we considering this Coronado thing because people have said? I, I mean, is this being driven by public comment? Because I, I, I'm, maybe I haven't seen it. Um, or is it just, uh, we're, this, this Coronado into this other district thing is because we're trying to figure out population balance. I mean, has, is there?
Population balance.
Okay, so no public comment has supported this?
Um, we don't Um, I don't know what you mean by no public comment has supported this. We're, we're trying to keep our, 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 um, you know, our, our mission is to create, you know, we know what they are and to keep
Well, I guess my, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, I, I heard a lot of public comment that said, you know, Coronado and Imperial Beach and i- is, is a different thing. Coronado is not a part of the South Bay. I don't, I, and I guess
Yeah, I know, I understand that.
Public comment that said, hey, Coronado should be part of this district. I mean, any, I believe, any public comment that is supporting the, the, the decision we're considering?
What, what we're doing is we're keeping communities together. We don't have, um, it's not for us to decide whether or not to exclude a community. We're just, our, our, um,
Oh, I know, and that's what I'm asking is, has anyone said that Coronado is a part of this, in community with these other communities?
Hey, um, Commissioner Servin, it's a mixed bag. I did a search on the community of interest, um, the spreadsheet, and you have a lot of comments that said it do not want to be part of the Southern District One, just like you said. But there are a few comments that said that they would like to be included into that district. So, it's a mixed bag. My comment was to bring the community of interest and military communities of interest together. Seemingly the way we are focusing on in the North County, keeping those military communities of interest together.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Well, I'll just echo what Commissioner Servin and Commissioner Pons just said. We've heard nothing really from anyone in Coronado saying they wanted to be so part of the, uh, border community. But we've heard, I think, many comments, uh, from the border communities, um, saying they didn't want Coronados to be part of them. So, I, I, I'm for keeping them separate.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
I'd like, oh, I, I'm not, okay, good. I, I'd like to address the, the Southern border issue, because we kind of said, I thought you said, do we want to have District One go all the way across? And people said, no. But I'd advocate that we could take it as far east as Patrero, which is one of the major border crossing sites and add that kind of triangle of population to District One. I'm sure it's not very much, but that might address the people that wanted the border to be longer with, or wanted more of District One to be in the border.
Um, gee, I believe, um, someone help me out here, because I, I believe that we actually already resolved that question when we talked about the East County. And, um,
I don't think so. I mean, well, was you want it to go all the way across or not? And we agreed we didn't want it to go all the way across. But I think it wouldn't hurt to make it go farther east to because of the border crossing issues that have been so discussed recently and the delays and the impact on moving freight and all that.
Um, okay, so why don't we take that up once we finish the Coronado?
Okay.
Topic. Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Bain?
And in that regard, I'd ask, uh, Flo to take a look at what that population would be while we're talking, so we could have that, uh, in hand. Um, I still have very strong feelings about this. Um, population, contiguity, and compactness would also, and I would argue, community of interest would seem very well served to me to take a much closer look at that area, um, between i- in and around Encanto. There's a lot of population there that shares a lot in common, I would say with District One. I deeply regret that I haven't looked at that in terms of community of interest input, but anecdotally, I can say, I'm fairly sure there's a lot more in common between those two areas on a day-to-day basis than, say, Coronado. Keeping in mind that it would also be a fairly straighter line. I think the points that Alex started to bring out with regard to contiguity, uh, and regard to moving Coronado into D1 and what might, else might have to be considered with regard to that, uh, coastline area in the city of San Diego is potentially very problematic.
Um, I'm not sure I understand that.
There, you'll remember
I don't know what Alex pointed out as, as a problem.
I'm sorry, this was an earlier conversation when, uh, I think at our last meeting, there was a discussion in one of the variations about moving the number from twenty, from the twenty thousand or so uh, in Coronado to something like thirty-three thousand by absorbing part of uh, the far western reaches of the city of San Diego, Little Italy and others. I'm, I'll leave it to Alex to describe that if necessary. It may not even be necessary. Um, with regard to Commissioner Pons's points and others about the military community of interest, and with due respect, because I will never second-guess him on defining a military community of interest. But I do think it's fair to say, we've heard, uh, from different elements of the communities, of, of the communities of interest about where military and veteran populations are and how they interact. And I do think it's fair to say, there are a fair number of service members and veterans in current D1, in Chula Vista National City, who would look at their current lives in different ways and a very mixed back. So, uh, between them and Coronado and active service members on the island, as well as veterans who live on the island. But I would say very, very specifically, that point on public input and what we've heard, as well as the historic trend. Whatever that statistical ability to elect has been, or is, the historic trend of how that ability to elect has played out is worth keeping in mind. And the grand total number of supervisors from that area, namely one from the Latino population, is worth bearing in mind, just as a fact, not as something uh, subject to one analysis, because I think there are multiple analyses available. But I would suggest we take a good, strong look either now or in the next session, uh, at that area in and around Encanto, where I think there really is plenty of justification on all our criteria. Um, starting with population figures, that would argue for an easier and frankly, more useful for our purposes fit to what we're trying to accomplish than Coronado does.
Can I just quickly say, Chair Bain, um, I apologize for being a little bit unclear in that section, um, but I think that's a moot point. What I was discussing was, in the context of doing those versions, one through six for thirteen A, trying to get them all to work together, that would require more movement around Coronado. Um, but if you're working just from thirteen as it is, and you move Coronado, um, that portion of San Diego, um, that's in, and I'll just show my screen briefly, it's easier, um, that is in the coastal district, that wouldn't have to be touched right now. Um, you know, you could still just move Coronado to District One, that's, that's what I was getting at. So, apologies for
No, thank you for that, and that's my, um, mis, mismemory again. I appreciate Alex.
And I have those numbers for the area out to Patrero. If you were to extend D1 out, um, sort of down almost a southeast line to Patrero, um, I, I'll say a couple of things. One, a few things, actually. So, first thing to note, it's roughly six thousand, seven hundred people. Uh, another thing to note is that by doing that, you do split the Hamul community, uh, plan area, because that extends down all the way to the border. And then lastly, I just want to make a note that some of these numbers, when we say five thousand, six thousand population, don't sound like much, and oftentimes they aren't, but when we are talking about the, uh, end districts, either the high district or low district, they are quite significant. So, I just want to reiterate that as sort of my experience of moving these maps around. Small changes in population to our highest populated and least populated districts will have more of an impact than you may be, uh, you know, thinking of in, in your head when you're putting, doing, putting this stuff together.
Thank you. And the point there is that we're, we'd be moving out of East County, which we've been struggling to populate and into, uh, D1, which is a pretty heavily populated, um, district, I think, is your point there. Thank you. And, and then again, I, I appreciate you pointing out the fact that Hamul, and we've had a lot of community input from Hamul, and the fact that they want to be in East County and do not want to be split up. Um, Commissioner Pons?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Chair Bain, for your comments regarding the military communities. I'd just like to say the majority of individuals, military families that work on Coronado, they actually live near Chula Vista and National City area, because they can't afford to live in Coronado. So, there's a tremendous backup when you're trying to go to Coronado Bridge in the morning and the evenings, because most of the people live on the east side of Coronado, but they work on the west side. So, there have been a tremendous effort to try to get more waterway transportation between Coronado and the Chula Vista area. I think this would push that initiative forward, and that would ease the burden on those that cannot afford to work and live on Coronado, the transit between Chula Vista, National City, Benita, where they work at on Coronado.
Thank you. Commissioner Dostal, and then maybe we can have a show of hands on, on this question.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Uh, my, my comment was regarding the, um, the public comment we heard. Um, I did hear the public comment, and what I heard was, we don't have, we in South County don't have anything in common with socioeconomically, racially, with, um, Coronado. And I hear that, and I don't disagree with it. And I think that we have a population numbers issue, and communities of interest. To me, it's about, or not to me, I think it's, it's a fact that it's about keeping communities of interest together and making sure they have, um, and they're not being blocked, um, by a white voter block. So, to me, that's what's relevant here, is that from what I've heard, District One already, which includes Coronado and Point Loma, um, is an ability to, to elect district for Latinos. So, that's why, to me, I did hear the public comment. I understand it. I, it, it makes sense to me in terms of the, the, the differences. And I think we still have an ability to elect district with them in it. So, that, that was my, why I think it makes sense to move it for population reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, um, well said. So, um, with regards to the question of, um, and again, we're not moving Point Loma, it's just Coronado, uh, whether or not to, to add Coronado to District One to, again, balance the population, um, more optimally, who would?
Um, Rosette, can I interrupt for just a second?
Sure.
When would you want to, I, I get worried again about, uh, whether we're going to have a question out of this discussion or a summary statement? When do, when, if at all, do you think it would be worth asking commissioners about that point I raised with regard to the, the Encanto area? I'm using shorthand.
Well, so I, to me, that's sort of a more, um, in-the-weeds mapping question, and so whenever we get to, don't you think, when we get to mapping?
Possibly, but i- in this case, and again, I, I don't mean to be speaking out of turn as one commissioner. But in this case, if numbers are a key factor here, as Commissioner Dostal just mentioned, and we have more flexibility as well as contiguity and compactness in that area.
I don't think it's just, I don't think it's just numbers, so Chair Bain, I think we can probably just call for this vote. I'm seeing, I'm, I'm, I think everybody's
Very well.
So, who, um, would be comfortable with, I'm going to put it that way, with, um, adding, uh, Coronado to D1? Oops, let me count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And how do we, how do we, um, measure that?
I saw eight. Kind of eight.
Oh, you saw eight? I'm sorry, eight. So, that's a majority.
Can I speak procedurally?
Sure.
Um, we did talk about this issue, about when it was eight and when it was nine. In other words, majority versus total that's needed for a, uh, decision. I think in fairness, the idea for this part of the discussion was a majority, and I would recommend capturing that as such in the summary statement. But I would also say, because it's so close, a summary question would be well in order to, because there are other issues to discuss down the road.
That, that sounds good to me. I hope, is, is that okay with everyone? Yeah. Thank you. Um, so I think we're done. We need to do the summary statement. Um, so I think we're done. We need to do the summary statement and I think we're done with South County. So should we pull up that? John, do you have something? Or no?
I'm sorry, I left it up.
So with regards to a summary statement, what we have is that considering all the input that we've received. And in order to. Achieve a better population balance. As well as protecting ability to elect. The majority of the commission, it is the will of the majority of the commission to move. Coronado into D one.
I would just add continuity also.
Okay, sure, thank you.
And Vice Chair Garcia, I would also specifically reference the military community of interest. I think that's very helpful.
Okay.
I think we need a full sentence here on the rationale, because I think there've been some very good points made. I, I would also wonder about the word protecting the ability to elect. If that's protecting countywide, I can see it. If, if it's the ability to elect in this district. Maintaining, respecting, something like that.
Yes, I, I agree with that.
Thank you.
Can I be heard, please?
Oh, Commissioner Servin, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
It's okay. So I'm just curious, like all our other prior mapping decisions were required a nine vote, nine votes from the commission, right?
Well, tho- those were, those are official actions with motions and the, as you can see here, we're just kind of doing a show of hand. What we're trying to do, Commissioner Servin. Is to try and figure out where the majority of the commission is. That hopefully will help us come together to provide mapping, you know, decisions. In a way that's a little bit more organized and, and, and where we don't have fourteen different commissioners. Raising their hand to draw different lines, which is maybe not been the most effective and efficient way to, to get to where we are. So that's why we're, this is not enough, we're gonna, we're gonna implement this sort of, these sort of. Informal decisions or informal sort of resolutions that we're coming to. With formal motions that we're going to make to map. Commissioner Diaz.
Did Commissioner Krugliak, I mean, I'm just concerned now that you've mentioned it. She had originally stated last night that she supported map for, or moving forward with map fourteen. And now that she's not here for these discussions, how would we know where that particular commissioner stands on any of these issues?
And that's, that's a fair point, Commissioner Diaz, but we did get eight. And so even if she had been here and not raised her hand, we'd still have a majority. And had she raised her hand, we'd have the quorum. So yeah, it's, I completely, it's a, it's a fair point. And if, if we had only achieved seven, then her absence would really have, you know. Made a big difference. At this point, we got the majority.
But I think for all these points, we can, that's where we can use the summary question to maintain the discussion a bit, and especially when we get to motions.
So Chair Bame, do you want to add the question here? And then we'll move on.
Sure. And please don't reject out of hand. I'm just trying to come up with something we can work from. Should we revisit?
I'll hold my fire.
Thank you. Should we revisit the topic of Coronado? If population and other statutory criteria. Can be more easily met. In other boundary areas.
Can, can I be really frank here?
Sure.
I feel like what you are, what is, what this question is trying to do is to reopen a topic that I believe we've. Somewhat resolved and it, so I, I feel like, I don't know, I feel like it might. There, there's, there's an issue of fairness, I think. I mean, I understand what you're trying to do.
Well, no, I want to be very careful with that and I, I will definitely follow the will of the commission on this. But the reason I held off on challenging. The decision you made to move forward with the discussion was that I think. The next discussion, the thematic discussion we have. May be better served by looking at all boundaries of that BIPOC district. In other words. If the BIPOC district, District Two on Map Thirteen A. Is moved south. Does that help with dealing with the central county issues that we've talked about? Stay with me for a moment. I specifically did not engage much on the question of what contiguity is preferable. But from what I understood, the commission to be discussing and council to be discussing. The contiguity between, in the Encanto area is quote, more solid. Than the contiguity between Coronado and D one and the rest of D one. I will follow the commission's will on this. That is plenty for highlighting the issue. That's all I wanted to get on the table. And if the decision is we don't need to revisit that, that's fine. But I want to be careful not to lock ourselves in when we haven't even had the discussion yet. And we've got concrete numbers to deal with there.
Okay, so I'm.
I agree with Commissioner Garcia. I think you're backdoor in the issue above that. I mean. About moving in Coronado in the District One, I think this is a backdoor, trapdoor way of getting back at that question. We've already had a majority vote on. So I don't think it lends a lot, lends a lot to, you know, the overall discussion. What I would like to see is Commissioner Hanson's point about moving the eastern boundary of District One. So we can get more coverage on the southern crossings into Mexico.
Thank you, Commissioner Pons. We can ask that question. Again, I think, I believe that we. Resolve that question as well in the East County conversation, but we can. We can stop screen sharing and, and ask for a show of hands of how many people want to.
Well, I, I'm sorry, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, could we bring it back up because it, given that I'm not hearing any other support for it. I'd be happy either to drop the question from the summary. And take it up when we have motions. Or reformulate the question. And my guess is it's faster to just drop the question unless someone has strong feelings to keep it in.
Amy, good.
I, I was just going to say, we would have to split the Humul, Humul planning area. If we were going to continue the border south all the way to Protero. And, and there was certainly a lot of interest in not doing that. A, not splitting a, a large community, but also, you know, the citizens of the planning area commented to us that they would like to stay together. So I think that was, to me, that was kind of the end of that conversation, but, but if, but if we want to talk about splitting Humul. So that we can continue that south planning border, you know, we should, but it just didn't seem like there was enough interest, but I, you know, just, just bringing that up.
Well, and Flo also pointed out that we're moving population from a. From a rural district that we're struggling to find population for into a district that. You know, doesn't require quite so much, where we can easily find other population to, to adjust borders. So I, I really, we're, we're really running, I mean, we still have, we have a big topic before us, so unless. Unless I hear. I'd like to know if we should just remove this question. It seems to me. I, I would rather remove it unless I hear some strong. Comments that we need to keep it in, we'll remove it and it doesn't preclude us from bringing it back up again, I don't think, or, or. Trying to address this.
Or addressing the topic during motions.
Yeah. I, I see Flo has their hand up. I don't know if it's John or Alex.
It's, it's me, it's John. I would just want to say that, that my comment before was. More, more generalized. This is a case where we are doing that, but I want to be clear that that's a general thing that I think just should be kept in mind.
Thank you.
And then I would like to say that we are in the background, putting together all of these into a map so that we can. As best we can, hopefully we'll have it completely up for when we start mapping. At a point, if we find that something said is going to be not doable, we are planning to jump in and let you know.
Great. Thank you. Um, I, so I, I don't, I can't tell because I, the screen is being shared, but I think we have wrapped it up and. Amy, it's back to you.
Woohoo, okay. Um, you know, it, we are moving a little faster, so that's good. We have, we do have some important issues to discuss in Central County. We did intentionally at the time.
You're up, but I was just, Chair Bame, I, we've been going on for. Quite some time and you had mentioned about a journey at some point for lunch. I just want to know, get an update.
Um, this, the idea was to adjourn now. My strong recommendation would be to continue because the original intent was to get through the entire thematic discussion. I think we can hit the highlights of this part of the discussion well within the half hour. And I would suggest to commissioners, a break at around two fifteen will be in order.
I'll try to move it as fast as I can. So Central County, we did include the coast and the central area because these two areas are, are. Are interlocked and, and but, but having said that. So let's try to continue to work with both of those in tandem. It was in no way intended to be a slight to the coastal district and their needs by, by any stretch. So the first area of, of concern is looking at the AAPI COI. The second area is looking at the BIPOC, so maintaining the minority majority district, which we've done. With our discussion in, in, on the East County, but because we pulled away some of their southern border. There may be some room in that area for some additions as we're looking at, at these two communities. And then finally, the coastal, the coastal area would be, would be an, an area to discuss. So I, if it's okay, I'd like to start out with the AAPI COI discussion. And is there anyone who would like to make a statement about the AAPI COI? And how we can best incorporate that in our maps? Although, okay, so we'll do Commissioner Diaz and, and then Commissioner Garcia. I'm sorry, my mouth is full of food. Could I go to, can you go to the next person? Yes, Commissioner Diaz, I mean, sorry, Commissioner Garcia.
Um, yeah, so I have, I guess, and I might need Flo to, to do this. I guess I'd like to understand. We, we keep talking about this AAPI, community of interest. And the area that they describe is a very big area, actually. And I'm, I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand really where this. You know, where this community of interest is and, and I, I guess I want to understand. So maybe from Flo, if we can see that sort of dent, that dot density map or something that will help us visualize where they are and why we really need to do that. My second question is, has to do with. They, this would be from Marguerite. They tell us that they're a community. And they have given us a long list of, of, of areas. But they then follow that up by saying, and we belong in the coastal district. And I guess I want to understand what our. Obligation is to put them in the district that they asked to be put in. Versus just keeping them together. But I, so two, two kinds of things that I'm, I'm trying to understand with the AAPI community. Because they're, they're pretty. There is a, when I looked at the map, there, there is a compact community around Miramar. But then the rest of it is pretty dispersed and distributed throughout the county.
So, and this is John, a few things I'll, I'll mention here. The AAPI community did submit a polygon through the Community Builder tool. Which represents an area. And so that I think is our best determination of the community of interest. In addition to the communities that have been listed. Many of which are, you know, they haven't all said the same communities, but. Generally speaking, those communities that have been listed in the comments that say, reference the AAPI community. It's been Mira Mesa, Rancho, Penas, Penasquidos, Miramar. There, the, those are, are very commonly listed. There are certainly others, including Kearney Mesa, Sarah Mesa, Claremont Mesa that have also appeared.
Linda Vista.
Linda Vista, for sure. So that is a very large area and those are. Highly populated communities. It would be challenging to preserve, as you see the district there, this is what the AAPI, I think this was public map submission for. This was the first one that we received that was. Labeled as the AAPI communities of interest through the Community Builder.
So. That was the API district.
Yes.
I, I really want to be careful in this conversation. Not to refer to a definitive AAPI submission. Members of the API community or something, fine, but I don't want, I think, I think we all understand, but I want to be explicit. There is no single AAPI community representative. There are a number of AAPI inputs we are dealing with. Sorry.
No, that's correct, Chair Bame. And I think it's important to notice also that we heard, we heard. Opposing opinions of where, of where this community should be. So this is really something that. We are going to have to consider and exercise discretion on. We are going to have to make a decision and some of the people will be unhappy. So I'm going to let Commissioner Diaz and then Commissioner Servin.
Yes, thank you. I think we've heard a significant amount of testimony in support of certain specified. Community areas that were mentioned in the, in before. I don't have to list them all. Actually, I did list them on, I've jotted them down on paper. But there are cultural festivals that happen annual, annually in the Mira Mesa area. For, you know, representative of variety of Asian American communities that, that live there and do commerce their business. Yes, I understand you read the, the letter from the Convoy Business District. I don't remember, recall the, the, which group it was, but this is a ve- very diverse community. And to just use one single, you know, letter as say there is opposition. Actually, we had overwhelming public testimony to support a very defined COI. So I just really want to point that out. And Rancho Penasquidos, Forest Ranch, Kearney Mesa, Sorento Valley, Mirror, Mirror Mar, Mirror Mesa. Linda Vista and even part of Black Mountain, all are very thriving. Asian communities and all connected by education, cultural heritage, commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Pons.
Yes, I, I totally agree with Commissioner Diaz. When you look at some of the community of interest comments. The AAPI community have aligned themselves in that district with LGBTQ communities, the BIPOC communities, the refugee community. So it is really a melting pot of communities of interest in that, in that, in District Three. And I'm going to call it District Three. I don't know what it's going to end up being. But I agree with her totally because, I mean, they have seemed to gravitate toward each other and they have. Sort of melded those cultures and these other things and practices together. So I really like the way it is now. And I can't see any modifications to it. Thank you.
So are you suggesting that the, that it's District Four that currently shows? So are you suggesting that the, that it's District Four that currently shows outreach into that COI area?
Yeah. Commissioner Pons, were you talking about the BIPOC district or were you talking about the coastal district?
I was talking about the BIPOC district. Are we talking coastal? I'm talking BIPOC. I'm talking about what is now Limon Grove, Mira Mesa in that area. And it's been called, called the Panda, the Panda District. But yeah, I'm talking about that district, not the coastal district.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Okay.
Because all of the communities listed in John's description and even some of Commissioner Diaz's communities are primarily in, in the, in, in District, in District Four on this map. Ramesses, is there something you would like to tell us? Or, yeah?
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't think there's any confusion as to what several members of the API community, as well as groups and organizations that represent a broad spectrum of, of people within the API community. There's no confusion as to what, what the overwhelming majority has said to us. That community was in support of map 14 and how that, how their community was drawn and represented in that map. That community consists, in my understanding from that public comment, as well as just my personal experience of the geography of the API, AAPI community, that includes the communities of Mira Mesa, Rancho Penasquitas, Carmel Valley, Linda Vista, Kearney Mesa, Claremont. And that's essentially this, what we're looking at in the alignment of the coastal district in map 14. And not only is it that these are cohesive, historic API communities, but now we're also talking about another sort of, you know, it makes more sense for these communities to be aligned along a coastal district. I mean, just a, just the obvious geography of the, the Interstate 15 corridor, right? Like me, I don't see that, it, it doesn't make any sense to create an East County district by going westward and taking coastal communities like Rancho Penasquitas and Mira Mesa. And Rancho Penasquitas and Mira Mesa have spoken clearly as to where they think they ought to be. And it's, and, and also, by the way, it also kind of makes sense based on what we were hearing from the East County. The East County communities and the unincorporated communities, from what I've heard of those communities, they're saying, you know, they have very different needs. They're on septic. They're on, you know, they have large lots. They're, they're, they're in unincorporated communities. And, and the, the types of issues that those communities deal with are very, very different from the kind of issues that Serrano Valley people will be dealing with and the type of issues that Mira Masons and Penasquidans will be dealing with. So I think we need to keep that in mind.
Okay. No, that's fair. That's fair. So, so Commissioner Dostal, what, what, um, what would you like to tell us?
You're on mute.
I was just wondering if we could look at the map on these areas. I'm just not as familiar with that part of San Diego. And I was just wondering if we can look at a map at what areas we're talking about and where they're falling in the, in what district.
I mean, it's, it's, and while they're bringing it up, you know, we're looking at a bulge, if you will, in, in the coastal district to go inland. And again, where we, we are having to take away, this is when we were trying to build population for the East County. We were trying to figure out where we can take some population from the central part, if you will, of, of the county, the coastal central, I guess. So, so that's what we're trying to put our arms around.
Okay, so I have the map up and let me be clear that what I'm showing now is 13A. Just for reference, but then I'm going to turn on some of the neighborhood or community boundaries for San Diego. So. Let me zoom in here. I'm going to start south to north just to orient us. So we got I-8 and then Linda Vista, Sarah Mesa, Kearney Mesa, Claremont Mesa. Military facilities that then continue up into Mira Mesa. And then right here we have Rancho Penasquitos, Torrey Highlands, Black Mountain Ranch. So I'll just leave it here with the, the labels for now.
Thank you, Alex. Commissioner Hanson.
Hi, I'm looking at a map and I live in North Claremont, so I'm very familiar with this area. The big barrier is Miramar because Miramar is north of Highway 52. And so there's kind of two groups of, of, um, AAPI populations. One in the newer communities north of Miramar. And then some smaller communities south of Miramar. It would include traditionally Kearney Mesa, but not Claremont. Claremont is not a traditional Asian community, although Linda Vista, which is farther south and west of here, is traditionally an Asian or API community. So I think you're kind of jumping around and drawing in other communities that are not represented by that, that community of interest at all.
Right, right. And, and, and thank you, Commissioner Hanson. I, I think that's a good point. I, I think what is, you know, most helpful for us as we sit here and look at this central area is that we have, if we can add population to D2, that may give us some, I'm sorry, East County, that may give us some opportunities to, 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 to take advantage of some of these communities. Can we, we cannot create a sixth district up the middle, unfortunately, you know, which is what we would all like to do, but that's not within our, within our power. So we really have to look at what do we have to work with? How much room, you know, what do we want this community to look like? And, and that's what we need to get to the bottom of today. So Chair Bame and then, and then, and then I think we'll take a, just, just kind of reset, don't take a recess, but just take a, a look back.
I just wanted to ask for population figures on some or all of these areas.
I just raised my hand to do just that.
Why did I?
So if I can go ahead and provide that, Mira Mesa is 77,935. Linda Vista, 35,00610. Kearney Mesa, 9,550. Rancho Penasquitos, 42,808. Miramar, I have the, there's Scripps, Miramar Ranch and Miramar Ranch North. I have Scripps, Miramar Ranch here. This is for the San Diego Community Planning, San Diego areas, 20, 20,933. Sarah Mesa is 22,817. And I don't know if I missed any, maybe Black Mountain Ranch. Which is. Black Mountain Ranch is, second.
And Miramar.
Is Miramar, I think was that Scripps, Miramar. It was.
That's Scripps Ranch.
Got it. Okay. So let me get you the other.
Miramar is the, is the, now it used to be naval, now it's a marine base.
Okay.
Airfield.
But there's how, there's a lot of businesses just north of that, but I think there's some housing also, kind of north.
What about Mira Mesa?
Mira Mesa. Just north of the base.
Yeah, Mira Mesa was 79,000 roughly. Sorry, I cleared it. I, but I did provide that, so hopefully somebody wrote it down. Black Mountain Ranch is 16,005 and I'll give you Miramar in just a second.
And John, I'll just chime in. Miramar might, you know, be a little hard because what we're looking at now is, like John said, the, the San Diego community plan area. So you have Miramar Ranch North, Scripps, Miramar Ranch. And then what we're talking about here, you know, you can see the base map. It's called Miramar. I know that it exists, but it's based on what we're trying to count population by with these outlines. That's military facilities. So John, if you pull that number, um, that's going to get.
It's going to be.
But it's going to get all this out here, but there's probably not much population.
Do we just want military facilities there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I can give you that.
Miramar has a very transient population, active duty.
10,963 for the military facilities that sort of outline that you see there.
I'm sorry, John, could you repeat that?
10,963. But once again, that is including that entire area.
Okay.
Quite large.
So before I go back to you, Commissioner Servin and Commissioner Diaz, I, I think it's now probably a good time to think about, so what does this mean? We, we have a good idea of what, where this community is. They, there is a gap between the, the two areas of this, if you will, south of the base and north of the base. Some of these communities are incorporated in East County and some are incorporated in the coastal district. So where do we see as a commission, this area heading more toward the coastal division? And do you want to, can you address that in your comments, Commissioner Diaz?
Yes, I would see it more towards the coastal, not east. In fact, Mira Mesa Community Park has the annual Asian Cultural Festival. So I would say north of the Miramar base is essentially a very large and significant hub. But that they do not share any interest with East County. So I think we've seen from public comments and also the correspondence that we've seen is that they would rather be associated coastal. That's what I've seen.
Okay. Commissioner Servin and then Commissioner Russ.
So again, the overwhelming public comment from people that are in Mira Mesa and Rancho Penasquitas, as evidenced by this letter that we received from a number of community leaders in those communities, state that they prefer to be aligned with a coastal district in Rancho Penasquitas and Mira Mesa. And then also I, I'd point out that, again, East County residents are of the mind that they don't have a lot of issues in common with communities such as Mira Mesa and Rancho Penasquitas. So again, Mira Mesa and Rancho Penasquitas really only makes sense to be aligned with the coastal district.
Okay. And Commissioner Russ?
Well, miracle of miracles, I agree with, with Commissioner Servin. I do think west of the 15, Mira Mesa and Rancho Penasquitos. And it just makes sense, but keep it west of the 15. I wouldn't go east of the 15 though.
Okay, Commissioner Chen.
I got the same comments that have all been made. That stuff is very urban, belongs with the coastal, not with the eastern.
Uh, Commissioner Dostal.
Yeah, I heard those comments very loud and clear too. I also had the question though that Commissioner Garcia had, which is if we keep that northern API community together, are we then obligated to put them in the coastal versus, you know what I mean? Like I thought it was about keeping that community together so they can vote together on the same, you know, have one supervisor. So that's my question because I did hear those comments and I'm not sure that that means we're required to put them in one versus the other as long as we keep them together. So that's more of a question, I guess.
Yeah, I think that was the same question Commissioner Garcia mentioned earlier. And Commissioner Garcia, if you want to go ahead.
Yeah. So a quick question. I heard from Commissioner Hanson that Claremont Mesa actually would not be included in this, in this community, but we, we can't take it out because then we, we're not drawing a continuous district. So I, I would really, I, I asked before if we could see that, that dot density map so that we could understand really where the density of this population is, where, I mean, when we're, I'm wondering if we can see that. And the next, and then my related question is, because we did some work in East County already and we have the possibility, it looks like we have the potential, maybe that we've added about 100, a little over 100,000 people into the East County, that's opened up some room here. That maybe we can get closer to map 13A looking like map 14 in this area because of that.
Yeah, I'd be glad to show that. I just want to confirm with Chair Bame, potentially legal counsel, that that'd be all right to pull up the dot density?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, so I'm going to, so I'm going to start with a blank map and just layer a couple of things on. So first, you know, that's going to be based on the census categories, state of Hawaiian, Pacific Islander and Asian. Okay, so those are the two dots. They're colored very similarly in this light blue. So this is the dot density. And then let me put on a couple of reference layers. So we can see first, you know, municipalities that do actually the, the planning areas here, so.
Can you zoom in just a little bit? I, I'm trying to find Rancho Penasquitos. I'm trying, there, thank you.
Yeah.
So definitely Miramar.
Mira Mesa. For Mesa. And then the other, it looks like the other concentration is, is in the BIPOC, already in the, already incorporated in the BIPOC district.
Right. I'm going to zoom out just a second here because it kind of gives a little bit more perspective about the names. So yeah, I agree, Mira Mesa, Rancho Penasquitos, you have the, the gap. This is Claremont Mesa, Linda Vista, Sarah Mesa. Then down into East San Diego.
So I, I just think this is sort of unfair to bring up the mall foster map, the density map for this demographic when we haven't done it for other demographics in this discussion. I, I just think it's unfair now because we could have introduced that for all the other discussions and it could have been relevant and it could have changed the discussion. So I just, okay, let me just finish. I just don't think it is necessary to do this now because we have not done it in the past. And although I think the mall foster map is relevant, especially when you get to RPV issues and VRA issues for this discussion, I don't think it's necessary and I don't think it's appropriate.
I, I, I hear you and I, and I think this came because the commissioner said, I don't, I don't know where these neighborhoods are. I need to see them on a map. So, so, and that, that is how we got here. I would suggest that if, if we need to look at these, you know, other communities, then, then we should do so. But for right now, I think this is sufficient for helping us identify where these communities are.
Amy, can I jump in?
And I wanted to.
Okay, go ahead.
I want to, can I jump in, please?
Go ahead, head.
Um, I want to be very clear about this. Once again, we are not making decisions solely or predominantly on this basis. And I would not be surprised if a commissioner requested the dot density map for the BIPOC corridor when we talk about it. But I did not hear any commissioners ask for this map to be displayed before or to show where that quote unquote "community" was relative to census data. And therefore I do think it's appropriate for the record.
And if I could build on what the chair said, my interpretation of this was simply define the geographic location. Because the community of interest requires two things. Geographic location and contiguity, and that's in the definition. And this was to help with geographic location. This community is no way big enough to be entitled to a majority minority district. And it's not being looked at for that purpose. But there have been cultural, economic, social communities of interest identified in this area. And this is to help commissioners who are not familiar with the center part of San Diego to understand better the areas that we're talking about and it nicely coincides with the testimony.
Okay. So are, are we, do we want to have a show of hands for commissioners who are in support of trying to match the borders of, let's look it up. District Three and map 14?
14? Sure.
Amy, sorry, you're saying to, you're saying to incorporate the geography of that community in map 14 into 13A? In part based on the rationale that Rosette cited.
That's correct. And, and if you think about it, it comes to a point just before Poway.
Um, John, no fair bringing on assistance.
Oh, so, sorry. You'll only be here for a minute.
It is a button.
So I do want to say that, you know, I know that we won't be able to fully incorporate that boundary from 14 for that coastal district. from fourteen for that coastal district. So I just, it's not to say there aren't parts, but I do just want to know, I do want to note that if, we won't be able to do it fully and maintain population balance with where we are already.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, so let's do another show of hands, just so I can count, so leave them up for a second. So this is everyone who is in favor of incorporating this, this community of interest boundary. It looks pretty almost unanimous, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, okay.
I just don't understand, so that's why I'm trying to raise my hand, so, but it was.
We're, we're just trying to identify that community of interest, which I think you were the one who said, I don't know where it is. Okay, so the next thing I think to look at is to talk about the BIPOC community. So what we've done here to date is we have taken out certain communities that were, were initially part of, of the BIPOC border. And, and so, so now we have to look at what is our population and what do we need to do to balance District two, which is the BIPOC, you know, we're gonna call it the BIPOC district. And.
I'm sorry, could Vice Chair Katerina?
Uh-huh.
Um, we didn't do a, we didn't type out a, anything after that.
We're not done yet. No, we're not done, because we have multiple points. So we have, the first one was AAPI, and now we're moving on to BIPOC. I know it's in different districts, but we're trying to, because these are, all of these are connected in a way that a change in one is going to bring a change in another. So that was why we decided to kind of, I don't want to say lump it together, but to include those. So where are we? So Commissioner Diaz and then Commissioner Brown.
Oops, no, I'm gonna put my, my hand down.
Okay, Commissioner Diaz.
Sorry, I, I had my hand up, but I will let, I think I might have a comment later.
Okay, Commissioner Emmon.
So to clarify what you're asking for, Director Katerina is talking about where we can move the BIPOC population around, so is well, I guess, let me take a step back. This is kind of a complicated move, we have attempted several times to accommodate the AAPI community of interest. And so we are talking about by pushing out the eastern boundary of the central coastal district towards the fifteen, that reduces the population of the rural East County district. We need to make that up, and so we are taking from the BIPOC community to augment that, and that is areas of Rancho Santa Fe.
No, no.
No.
No, we're talking about so, this, the unincorporated areas of the BIPOC, so Rancho San Diego.
Sorry, that's what I meant. I misstated that, correct, okay, yes, thank you. So we're taking those and moving them to the rural East County. So now we need to go and offset that change to the BIPOC community that, that goes from El Cajon into the five. And so we're looking at pushing that up into Claremont Mesa and Sierra Mesa potentially, or things that are contiguous with the eight freeway, I think, which defines the northern boundary of that area. And so we, you know, I mean, that was what we tried to do with thirteen A, two, three and four. So it would have to be some potential variations on that thing, I believe, I'm not really sure, but it, one of the issues that we created last time is El Cajon kind of hangs out there as a, it doesn't really look compact, if you will. But I don't know that we're considering moving the same geographies. So I don't, I don't know, I just made a big preamble, I don't, I don't know if I got it anywhere, I'm sorry. In terms of the question, but I think those are the geographies that we're talking about. We're moving unincorporated, that was associated with the BIPOC central community into the rural East County. That freed up about was it like a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
For that. And we pushed out of that area. I don't know how much, but the Penasquitos, Miramar, Miramasa, the sum total of all that is more than a hundred thousand. Right, so we're, we're not offsetting one to one in, in terms of that exchange. If we go up into Claremont Mesa and Sierra Mesa, we're again not going to offset what we've taken out of the BIPOC community, just by doing that exchange either. This is complicated, I mean, I can't do math for sure in my head. I'm just rattling this off, so this is very complicated.
Just quickly from a flow, a demographic perspective, like John said, we're working on everything you guys have discussed thus far. And Commissioner Emmon, you're right on, I think there is going to be some, some pinch points, but I think there's going to be a decent result that we can look at, that will get us below ten percent, so.
Commissioner Hanson and then Commissioner Garcia.
I wanted to point out about, or clarify where you're talking about moving. Is it the part that's yellow now that is? I'm looking at the eight oh five and fifteen and that, that quarter. Could, because Sarah Mesa and Claremont are not connected. Sarah Mesa is way east of here and the way the map is now, Claremont and Linda Vista are connected with the rest of the AAPI community from the west. In other words, if you go through Miramar on the east side, we're not. But if you go around Miramar on the west side, it brings you to Linda Vista and Claremont. Sarah Mesa is something out by the stadium, you know, just the bluff above the stadium. That's Sarah Mesa.
So I guess, oh, thank you.
Kearney Mesa has very few people living there, it's a business district. And that's where the convoy street business district is that they've talked so much about. That is Asian business owners, but most of those owners live in Rancho Penasquitos, Miramasa, I mean, you know, Miramasa. They don't live in Kearney Mesa, but that's where their businesses are.
Yeah, that helps, but. What about? Okay. I'm trying to see what the, oh, Navajo.
Navajo, that's out north of San Diego State.
Yeah, maybe just to follow up on what Commissioner Emmon was stating, I mean, just the, the general movements and we're working on in the background would be, you know, talking earlier about the area unincorporated around El Cajon and be moving that area that I'm cursing over right now over from the Green District to East County in yellow. That requires, and then the other thing we were talking about wanting to do is moving Rancho Penasquitos, Miramasa into the coastal district in purple. So what, what we're left with though is that the purple is going to be overpopulated by law. Meanwhile, the Green District lost a lot of population. The yellow is going to be decent, I think, you know. But that means the green importantly needs to pick up a lot of population from the purple. So I think right here, this is going to be the area that will probably change to be green. How many of them or which ones exactly? You know, we can work on that, but that's generally kind of what I'm hearing.
Okay. I'm just gonna write these down. Commissioner, I think Garcia was next, and then Commissioner Brown, then Commissioner Diaz.
Amy, can I interrupt?
Uh-huh.
We are more than five minutes past for this discussion. Again, I just want to make sure we've got an idea of when you're planning to, how long you want to keep the discussion going, given the number of speakers. And also whether we're making progress towards a summary statement, which I assume would be a good thing to be asking commissioners to look at. I, just procedurally, I'm wondering if we're getting to the point where you might give, want to give Flo some homework to do during the lunch break.
Yeah, 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 I hear you, and I think, I think we're, I think we, well, if I'm wrong, commissioners, correct me. But I think we're in agreement that we want to try to incorporate this coy as in, in, in map fourteen, so we, we know that. And we need to increase the size of population of the the BIPOC district community. And and we need to do that in a way that balances that, really the three districts that could be impacted, the coastal district, the BIPOC district, and theoretically if things get pulled out of the East County district. So if, if everyone is in agreement, we could start with that summary. And, and then we can hammer out the who, what, where's and wins when we talk about the motions and how we're going to make this happen. In the meantime, Flo could be working on, you know, looking at where, where, how that will balance and, and, you know, it may, may mean that Claremont and Sierra Mesa come out of the coastal district and get moved into the BIPOC district, which is, you know, we're going to have to balance it some way, so. That's, that's kind of where we're at. Does that, if, if we can have a show of hands, we do those three things? So adjust the coy for the API, balance the BIPOC district, and then adjust the East County district as necessary. Does that sound reasonable to everyone?
We already voted on the first one almost unanimously, right?
Yeah.
Can I, yeah, I guess.
Commissioner Garcia, but let, yeah, I just want to, I just want to finish it up so we can all get a break and, and we're, we're gonna, we have more to talk about. I mean, obviously.
Okay, that's why, I, I was just going to say, because I heard from Flo that they were not really going to be able to basically shift map fourteen into thirteen eight, and, and what I wanted to say was to point out.
Have to caveat it as.
Well, specifically that Miramasa community, which is definitely a compact, yeah, obvious on that, but. This population.
So should we start, should we try a summary statement? Is everybody ready?
Yeah.
Is there anyone who would like to dictate slowly a summary statement? Commissioner Servin, would you like to do that?
Sure.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I'm comfortable in doing the first one, so which is so we're directing Flo to take the communities of Miramasa and Rancho Penasquitas to be in the coastal district, which is, I guess, number four?
Yes, number four, yep.
Okay.
As, as able, because they've already said it could be tight.
No, I don't want to say that.
Okay, fair enough. We'll see what we get. Okay, so, so that is no, for, for this, does anyone have anything they want to add to that?
Yeah, so, and then.
And I would add to, add to that the qualifier that we're trying to achieve a, a community of interest represented by the Asian Asian Pacific Islander community.
As well as listening to those communities as to where they're aligned, they, they want to be aligned. It's not just the AAPI community that we're listening to here.
So it's like, keep the communities, just move the communities, right?
Oh, excuse me, thank you, Commissioner Chen. So I think this would be better stated as to maintain a cohesive community of interest representing a historic, a, or, yeah, representing a yeah, you know, that language that we put in in the other ones. And then. As well as to respond to the, to.
Well, I'm not sure we want to go quite that far, because we can't guarantee anybody's going to get what they want or where.
Well, I mean, this is the basis, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, like, this is the basis for why we're doing this, is because we're trying to do the, we're, we're, we're recognizing the API community as well as the, the people from Miramasa and Rancho Penasquitas are asking for this as well.
I, I think it, I think it's fair to say we're representing the community. I think that's, because that's all we did with the others.
Went too far.
Yeah.
Why? I mean, why don't we, what we're saying, what we're doing.
I'm not going to argue about it, we're not going to argue about it. This is, this is a summary statement, it's a summary statement, it's all it has to be.
Can I mention one thing too? This is the first one where we've said direct flow rather than just the concept, which is move the communities, Miramasa.
Yeah.
Joe, yeah, because we're not making motions at this point. These are the concepts that are going to move us into the motion phase. So general agreement to move the communities and don't add that, move the communities of Miramasa, Rancho Penasquitas, coastal district, whatever the number is going to be, to maintain a cohesive community of interest. And it's not historic, as Commissioner Hans is a, a historical a, a historical API interest.
And for the record, I would just state, as with all these summary statements, they are addressing and accounting for public input. We didn't do it in the others, but that doesn't mean we're not doing it, we are doing it, and we will make sure to capture that in both the final map and the final report. If we need to capture that in motions for purposes of explaining, we can. But I think it's fair to say we're addressing and accounting for the public input.
Okay, I just don't want it to, to, I don't want anyone to have the impression that we're doing this just for, in response to the API community.
It is stated on the record, Commissioner Servin, very eloquently, appreciate you doing it.
Okay, so now BIPOC. What are we going to say here?
How about increase the BIPOC boundaries north into District three and District four as necessary to
relieve. Better balance.
Yeah, the, the better balance population in District four, well, in, in both the districts, actually.
Actually, we don't want to move into District three, because that just makes balance worse.
Yeah, we, it's District four.
Okay, okay, okay.
Well, I wonder if we could also, and this would be a little bit going back to what Chair Bane said earlier, if there are areas in District one that might.
I would say here just north into District four as necessary and perhaps south into District one.
Okay.
As a secondary consideration, more on that later.
Okay.
And it's not to balance this, it's to offset what we're doing above. Well, like I said, reads okay, never mind.
I think for these statements, Commissioner Emmon, it, it's okay. I, I would want to be careful in any motion or direction, but I think for here, it's capturing the conversation.
Okay. Anything else? I think that's it.
I'm just not greater on, I'm not clear on if we should use the terminology BIPOC boundaries north.
Make this two boundaries, very good.
Yeah, thank you.
And this captures what Commissioner Brown was talking about in terms of the specific communities of Claremont and can we be a little bit more specific? Because Tirasana, Sarah Mesa. I don't have the map in front of me, but is that what we're referring to?
I'm not sure we can, we have enough information at this point to be that specific, and I think that's what Flo is going to have to come back to us with. And we'll, I think we're going to have to cover that in the motions because we'll have a better idea of, because we've been moving so many things from A to B to C. I think it's difficult at this point right now to say exactly where it is, but we don't want to go too far into Tierra Santa, for example, because it's in the East County District, and we can't, we can't pull too much away from there.
You'll be going into Linda Vista, Alex.
Yes, likely. I'm happy to yield the floor back to Chair Bane.
And Commissioners, if you haven't appreciated your co-vice chairs yet, you better do it now. Thank you both. That was outstanding. All right, now you're stuck with me again. I also want to draw attention and thank the more than fifty members of the public who I think have been watching this conversation directly. I hope they'll agree that we are at least addressing and accounting for all the public input that we possibly can. And Commissioners, my thanks for doing such a great job of that. It really shows the homework having been done. And in the face of overwhelming submissions late at night, I feel very confident we're counting for all that. All right. Two thirty-two. I do want people to have time both to decompress, but also to think about what and how we're going to capture all this formally without going all night. And I really do plan to move expeditiously when we come back because I think the points are well understood. So with that in mind, let me first see, is a half hour long enough for a break?
Well, how long will it take Flo to incorporate all these things?
Fair enough. Alex, John?
I am, let's see.
Keeping in mind that they've been working on some of this in the background.
Yeah, I have, based on what I'm looking at, I generally will say I have like about six to seven movement, major movements, and we have one, two, three, four, five of them done. So I think half an hour should be sufficient. For me.
I was hoping you'd say forty-five minutes, so.
Oh, sorry. I'm pretty quick, so.
Let me, let me add, though, that I can promise you, council could use some time, and I'd like to call Marguerite relatively early in our discussion, just to make sure there's nothing we need to be especially mindful of or something we haven't already stated as we work through the conversation. I could go for thirty minutes or forty-five minutes, whichever the commission would prefer.
And if I may interrupt, Chair, I know my video isn't on, but there it is. I think I, I am hoping that within forty-five minutes, we'll have our Voting Rights Act Council joining us to help with those issues as well.
Forty-five.
Okay, very well. I'm going to say forty-five because it's only fifteen minutes difference. So we're going to adjourn in about one minute, two thirty-five. That'll bring us back around three twenty. Commissioners, just to preview, I think we'll probably start with Flo presentation of their homework. Have an opportunity to ask questions of them and council and special counsel. If Mr. Adelson wishes to add some more, I hope we can take advantage of that early in the conversation and let him have before, for a few minutes. But my hope and intention is to get to motion discussion as quickly as possible. That will be centered on motions regarding map thirteen A and the summary statements. And we'll have the summary statements available. In fact, staff, I'll ask you to email the summary statements to all Commissioners so they've got them in front of them. Barbara, anything else you need?
Nope, sounds good.
Okay. I will, just to, for the record, be asking the co-vice chairs to be available a little earlier. We'll try to have a call just for process reasons. Any other questions on process? Good, so we are in recess as of two thirty-five, and we'll see everyone promptly at three twenty. Thank you, Commissioners.
Shape the future of San Diego County. The County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission, IRC, is charged with redrawing the boundary lines for the county's five supervisory districts, and your input is needed now. The IRC is moving closer to the December fifteenth deadline to complete this work, and draft maps are under development right now. Every ten years, the lines which establish the county's five supervisory districts be redrawn following the release of the most recent US Census data. Boundaries for each of the supervisory districts must be redrawn so that each district has reasonably equal populations using the latest population counts from the 2020 census. The goal is to redraw each supervisory district to balance population while ensuring our diverse populations are fairly represented and have a voice at the decision-making table. Why should I get involved? The redrawn supervisory district maps created through the redistricting process could change the boundaries of your current district or who represents you on the County Board of Supervisors, the governing body of the County of San Diego. Redistricting affects how diverse communities across the county are represented. In effect, redistricting matters because how maps are drawn and how communities and neighborhoods get grouped together or separated could affect whose voices are heard each election day for the next decade. Redistricting, done properly, ensures that communities have a fair opportunity to elect the representative of their choice. The County Board of Supervisors is responsible for making decisions about how the county's resources are allocated. This graphic illustrates the county's budget for the current fiscal year and a small sample of the responsibilities of the Board of Supervisors. County supervisors make decisions about things that affect you, so your ability to have a fair chance at electing a supervisor who represents you is why redistricting is so important. As populations shift over time, supervisory district boundaries are updated to ensure county supervisors represent a fair portion of the county's population. This graphic illustrates the changes to county supervisory district boundaries that occurred between nineteen ninety-one and two thousand and eleven or after the two thousand and two thousand and ten census. In the last ten years, the County of San Diego has grown over six percent, making it one of the fastest-growing counties in the state. According to the twenty twenty US Census data, the total population in the County of San Diego is three million, three hundred and two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two. Divided by five districts, the target population for each supervisory district is now approximately six hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and fifty-two. When determining where the boundary line should be drawn, there are certain criteria to which the IRC must adhere. These include standards of contiguity, compactness, and substantial equivalence of population. First, districts must be of reasonably equal population. This rule is required by the US Constitution. Second, districts must conform to the Federal Voting Rights Act to ensure minorities have a fair opportunity to elect representatives of their choice. Third, districts must be contiguous. No part of the district may be connected only at a point. Bridge and ferry service connection are okay. Fourth, districts must minimize the division of cities, neighborhoods, and communities of interest to the extent possible. Fifth, districts should be geographically compact such that nearby areas of population are not bypassed for more distant populations. In addition, the IRC cannot consider the place of residence of any incumbent elected official or political candidate in the creation of a map. Nor can the IRC draw districts for the purpose of favoring or discriminating against an incumbent, political candidate, or political party. There are additional criteria that apply only to San Diego County. Three of the five districts must include unincorporated areas. Two of these three districts must be comprised of geographic area predominantly outside of the incorporated cities as population will permit. As a point of reference, the County of San Diego includes eighteen incorporated cities, mostly in the western part of the county, as you can see on this map, but much of the county is unincorporated territory, that is, land outside the boundaries of the eighteen incorporated cities. How will the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission gather information to draw new boundaries? Primarily from two sources. First, the IRC has the twenty twenty census data obtained from the twenty twenty census report. Second, the IRC utilizes public input. Information gathered from the public to help the IRC learn about and understand communities of interest. A community of interest, or COI for short, is a contiguous population that shares common social or economic interests that should be grouped together within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. Communities of interest are not defined by their relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. A COI might be defined by a common culture or a common language, but there are many other ways to define a COI. A neighborhood that is adjacent to a shipping port could identify itself as a COI because it shares common interests pertaining to dealing with the impacts or effects of having a shipping port as a neighbor. Information about COIs comes from the public, from people telling the IRC about their COI. The census data will give the IRC some information about neighborhoods and communities, but it won't necessarily tell the IRC about all issues and concerns that bring a community together. Here are some questions to help you identify and define your COI. Does your neighborhood share certain celebrations or traditions like street festivals or parades? Are there important places where your community gathers, like parks or community centers? What is the history of your community? Other questions you may ask. Are you part of a community that has issues that have not been adequately addressed by your elected representatives? Has your community come together to advocate for important services, better schools, roads, or health centers in your neighborhood? Have you worked for more recognition or support of your community, like having holidays recognized or historical events commemorated? Common issues of concern may also form a COI. For example, a group of people that wants to reduce crime, increase jobs, has concerns about a particular land use or environmental condition, or increased social services. Finally, if you feel your COI is currently divided, identifying those obstacles is just as important. Public hearings are expressly offered for the purpose of hearing from the public about their community and especially about COIs. The task of the IRC is to redraw the supervisory district boundaries, and the geographical information you provide is just as important for doing that as defining the common interests the group shares. There are many sources on how best to define your COI, but it is also important to describe your COI geographically so you can draw it on a map, including identifiers like major streets, highways and intersections, military bases, shopping malls, schools, hospitals, parks, historic sites, community centers, religious places, social service agencies, and landmarks will also help to find the borders of your COI. You may also want to consider adding the locations of any neighborhood street festivals, parades, or other events. Remember this when submitting input on communities of interest. What is your community of interest, COI? Again, a COI is a contiguous population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a single district for purposes of effective and fair representation. Think about populations who share common issues, physical features, entities like military bases, malls, schools, hospitals, parks, religious places, or social services, or street festivals, parades, or other events. What are the boundaries of your COI on a map? Where should the lines be drawn? Consider natural boundaries such as freeways, roads, rivers, natural features, or anything else which may create a barrier or recognizable line. By law, the County of San Diego IRC must hold public meetings and gather public testimony through public hearings before and after drafting maps to learn about the community and especially about communities of interest. The IRC is drawing and revising draft maps now with a goal to have a final draft in early December for adoption prior to the December fifteenth deadline. After going through a public transparent process, the IRC will adopt a final map that will be used for County Board of Supervisors elections for the next decade. So how can you get involved? Share your vision online. Share your thoughts about the IRC's current draft maps. Draw and submit your own proposed supervisory district map. Submit an e-comment or request to speak during a regularly scheduled IRC meeting. Email us at redistricting@sdcounty.ca.gov. Call us at six one nine four zero nine three zero zero three. Mail us at san diego county IRC, sixteen hundred Pacific Highway, room four oh two, San Diego, California, nine two one oh one. Invite a Commissioner to speak to your group. In addition to providing comments at public meetings, members of the public can send emails or e-commerce about the draft maps, or they can choose to draw their own map using the tools on the IRC website, There are a variety of tools so that everyone can choose the preferred method of providing feedback. The Community Builder tool allows the public to draw and submit maps of their neighborhood or community and add comments about their COI for consideration by the IRC during map drawing. The District Map Viewer is a view-only tool that allows a closer review of IRC draft maps and maps submitted by the public and is another of many tools you may use to get involved in the redistricting process. Finally, the District Scenario Modeler, or DSM, also allows the public to draw and submit draft maps for consideration by the IRC. The DSM is an interactive web-based tool designed to provide the public access to mapping technology that can be used to draw district boundaries. Instructions and help with the DSM are available on the website. You don't need to use the DSM to submit a map idea. This is one tool that may be useful, but all feedback and ideas are welcome. Whether you provide input through testimony at a public hearing, submit an e-comment to the website, draw your community with a Community Builder tool, or submit a complete district map, your voice will be heard and your input will be considered. Thank you for taking the time to watch this informational video. We hope you found it useful and that it has inspired you to participate in the process of redrawing the boundary lines for the County of San Diego's five supervisory districts. We look forward to receiving your input. You can help shape the future of San Diego County. The County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission, IRC, is charged with redrawing the boundary lines for the county's five supervisory dis- is charged with redrawing the boundary lines for the county's five supervisory dist-
Hi, Barb.
Hello, Marguerite.
Hi there. How are you?
Good. We're the only ones that came back on time.
No, no, no. I see Commissioner Hanson. Don't you see her?
Hey, I'm here too, you know.
I'm here too.
Hey, I count for something. Come on, guys.
Yeah, I know, really. I had grilled cheese. What did you have, Commissioner Inman? Papaya?
Ah, yeah, there you go. They left me a Caesar salad. They're all out at the beach right now.
Is the weather good?
Uh, we had a rainstorm come through, but it's cleared off now. So, yeah.
Send it this way.
Yeah.
Won't take it.
I come all the way to Maui for an all-day meeting with the IRC. That's my idea of fun.
Yeah. Now, we feel real deserted here, though, Ken. In fact, where were you and I was talking about, you know, statistically significant sample sizes?
Yeah, I heard you. I heard you, Jack.
Where were you?
Drinking a Mai Tai.
Yeah, I bet. Hey, are you thinking about attending the next Thursday's in person at all?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I'm thinking of that, too. What time does that start? Do you remember? I got the timestamp.
Does it really matter, Jack? You're retired.
I have it at 5:30.
Oh, is it 5:30? 5:30? Well, 5:30, that means it's dark.
I can drive.
Yeah, because I was going to say you don't want to drive with a one-eyed guy who can't hear. Has an artificial heart.
Hello, commissioners. Can I just let you know, um, we'll be reconvening in just a minute, okay? Then by... You there? Okay, Alex is on screen at this point. I don't think we can, I don't think we can, but I have to do this as best we can if we have to.
Your babe? Your audio is on?
Hold on. No, but...
Hey. Anyone know any good jokes?
Alex? Alex?
Yes.
Can I ask you to give Barbara, take yourself off camera and mute and call Barbara?
Okay. Uh, I don't have Barbara's number necessarily.
She's been trying to reach out to you.
Okay, one second. Maybe I'm missing text messages or is Barbara on this right now? No. Oh, Nicole's gonna send. Thanks. I will go off.
Okay, Commissioner Serbin, here you go. What do you call a one-legged cow? A steak.
What is it?
A steak. What do you call, uh, let's see. Uh, what do you call a three-legged cow? Tri-tip.
Tri-tip. Oh, I should have gotten that one.
What do you call a four-legged cow?
Cow.
It's a cow. There's another one. So you want to, what's it? A no-legged cow. Because, anyway, there's, you can do it with all the legs. I don't remember all of them. No.
Nice.
Hey, everybody. I'm getting a migraine, so if you see me going like this, it doesn't have anything to do with what you're saying. It's because I am, I'm getting a headache. So I just wanted to tell you that ahead of time.
Thank you.
Okay, I did remember, what do you call a cow with no legs?
All right, what is it?
Ground beef.
Ground beef.
I can't remember, the one was two, there is one with two, but I.
Everyone.
To what Commissioner Inman?
Okay, we're exchanging jokes, what do you call a cow with one leg?
The chair?
Steak.
Pretty close.
Cow with no legs is ground beef, or cow with three legs is tri-tip, I can't remember, it was two legs, there's, there's something for two legs.
No, I'm not going there, all right, public, our thing, David, are we back with everyone finally, now that we've rejoined?
We are, and I'd like to note for the record that Commissioner Krugliak has joined the meeting.
With a warm welcome, thank you. All right, um, so we are reconvening at 3:32, um, thank you everyone for your patience, not least members of the public. I'd like to start with Flow, oh, and I should also know for the record, Mr. Adelson is with us, welcome.
Thank you.
Um. What I'd like to do, as I said before the break, is start with the presentation from Flow on where we are. We certainly have, I think, a couple more issues we need to resolve. Sometime between Flow's presentation and motions, I want to make sure we give Mr. Adelson a chance to update us and give Commissioners a chance to ask him questions. But I'll ask everyone to be cognizant of the time, and that we may need time for discussion of motions. Okay? That's where we are at the moment, any questions on that before I turn to Flow?
No.
And please keep in mind, we have at least a little bit to talk about after we complete the mapping, the substance of mapping motions today, let's put it that way, but I don't think it will take the entire Commission a long time. So with that, I'll turn it over again to Alex and John to brief us on what they did during lunch.
Thanks, Sharon, so I'm gonna share my screen, um, and what I have shown here now are two, two maps, one is 13, and that's what the pink bold boundaries are, that's 13A, excuse me. Okay, and then third, I just re, for, for numbering purposes, I'm just starting at 10, 13A, 10. And, um, that is gonna include everything that was discussed in, in the prior portion of the session here. And I'm gonna start kind of in the same order as we did speaking about these changes in the north. So, what we did was expand District 5, so that it included the Indian reservations, native lands to the east, and I'm going to turn on those, just so you can see. So that got everything out here, uh, those coyotes down through, I also brought in Mesa Grande. It did not note take on Borrego Springs, because we were trying to not put too much population into District 5, which already was overpopulated. And then the other change, zooming in here, this is that unincorporated portion out southeast of West Cundito, that was put into D5 as well. And then if you're really astute and you're seeing there's a little change here, that's just making sure that one of the planning areas is whole, wholly in District 5.
And Alex, uh, is that my question, would be the planning districts, when you expanded the boundary out up above, are we still completely?
Uh, yeah, good question. Let's see, I think we might have to do, so desert is one, um, I'll have to look at that a little more closely, because these are kind of hard, the blocks are very big. So I'm not sure if we can keep this whole one whole, um, exclusively in the yellow East County District, but if it can, I will try, I don't think any population would change too much, but it'd be taking this portion that I'm hovering over right now and making it yellow, to make sure that that orange boundary is wholly within the yellow.
North Mountain is also not whole, potentially?
Right, that one, that one is also, yeah, pretty tough to keep whole in this configuration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then moving down to the Alcoa region, we discussed keeping Alcoa in the green central district here. Uh, but then moving unincorporated areas that were part of the two community plan areas, Spring Valley, uh, and then De Oro, and just let me turn on census designated places too, to get the other names, so you understand that this would be Ranch of San Diego, Casadora, Mount Helix, Spring Valley, and La Presa. And I get rid of some lines too, because I know it can be a little confusing, so moving that area, which most of that was in the green district, moving into East County Yellow District, but then La Presa was in District 1, and now it's gonna be part of the East County Yellow District. Okay, and then, over in the south on the coast here, we talked about putting Coronado into District 1. So that happened right there. And then talking about kind of central and coastal region, I'm gonna turn on the, the planning areas once again, to see that Mira Mesa, Rancho, Penasquitos, Torrey Highlands, Black Mountain Ranch, were moved into the District 4, with the purple district here. It's a significant population, uh, change, and then we talked about having then to compensate for that, because we know the green district lost a lot of population here. Purple took on a lot of, of population up to the north there, so then this area right here, this is how District 4 used to extend out that bold pink line, moving these neighborhoods, these, mainly these four, Kearney Mesa, Claremont Mesa, Linda Vista, Serra Mesa, into the green district. So that's kind of following the ideas to a T, uh, unfortunately, that gets, leaves us with a high overall deviation, 18.7%. And you can see here, zoom in just a little bit. That's because District 2, although we are trying to, you know, it lost a lot with Ranch of San Diego and the areas around Alcoa, and taking on those four neighborhoods, it did it, put it up to over, being over the ideal by 75,000, or 11.4%. And then the lowest populated is District 3, it's under by just over 48,000, negative 7.3%. Now I did, maybe let's let that sink in and think about that, and I'll let Chair Bane discuss.
Alex, could you bring, could you bring that table up again?
Yes.
I want to make sure Commissioners have seen that, I'm actually gonna take a picture of it. But again, uh, I want to make sure we're looking at those total population numbers in general. There's a lot of variation there, but we can see where we need to direct at least our initial work. I'd also note the other tables, in fact, I'll ask Alex you to send to staff, or however Barbara, it's best distributed, let's get this document out to Commissioners.
Okay, as soon as I get it, I can send it up, Chair.
Good. Um, Alex, I appreciate the chance to display it, now, let me, Alex, that completes your presentation, correct?
Yes, for, for the time being, yep.
Yeah, and John, did, you didn't have anything to add to that?
I, I won't right now, but I have additional thoughts, and I'm aware those things can be moved based upon, so I'm happy to add those at.
So what I'd like to do is have, I won't even call them clarifying questions, technical questions, to make sure we've understood what Flow has done so far. Okay? With that in mind, I've got Commissioner Serbin, then Commissioner Russ. Commissioner Serbin.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Alex for the presentation, um, I noticed that to, when, when, um, to carry out the directive to, uh, go north for the the central district, you went into Linda Vista, Claremont Mesa, et cetera, um, was, did you try going north into like the north of the 8, but east of the 15? I, I guess those, that, those neighborhoods might be, um, I guess maybe Rolando, San Carlos, like. Were you able, did you consider doing that instead?
Yeah, give me one second so I can finish this email, and I think it might be better if I share my screen one more time to make sure I'm talking about the same spots, but I just want to get that information to everybody, so.
Go ahead, while you, while you're doing that, John, that doesn't relate to any of the thoughts you had.
No, but I, I will mention that, I believe east of the, if I have my geography wrong, I'm, I'm sorry, east of the 15, I believe a lot of those areas were already, uh, are in 3. And I'm gonna let Alex do it, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, Commissioner Russ, did you have, okay, we'll go with this, thanks.
Yeah, I have the map up, so Commissioner Serbin, if you just wanna, to help me get my bearings.
Yeah, I was thinking about this Navajo, Tierra Santa areas, but it's, because it's already in the East County, is that why we don't wanna?
Right, because they're already the lowest populated, so taking that, um, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Go ahead and leave the map up, Commissioner Russ.
Boy, that, um, District 2 looks like a flying gerrymander, if you ask me, um, that, that really worries me, that, just the look. But it looks like if we cut the head off of it, that is, Esken, um, Alcoa Home, that would go into, into the underpopulated uh, District 3, but what is, what was that, 100 and, what was, 105,000, something like that?
Yeah, that's correct, it's about 105,000.
Yeah, 105,000, and that of course would bring the, um, the overpopulation of, of District 2 down by that amount, um.
Commissioner Russ, let's be careful to keep at the technical level.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's.
But you're, you're still there, that's okay.
I'm, that's what that would do, all right, thank you, I appreciate it, all right.
Uh, before we turn to Council and Special Counsel, any additional technical questions? Very good, so John, Alex, thanks, stay with us, please, um. Marguerite and Bruce, I'd like to turn the floor to you, keeping a close eye on time and maximizing Commissioner Q and As, Bruce so, did so well the other day, uh, rather than presentational points, but I both, I want to give you both a chance to provide any framing remarks from a legal perspective on what was just presented.
Oh, and yeah, I think we made a huge amount of project progress, Chair, and have something to work with here, but what I wanted to address was the recurring questions on communities of interest, uh, to clarify that concept, um, it's defined in code. And, um, the, the criterion is to minimize the division. It's not no division, but it's to minimize the division, and a community of interest is defined in, in terms of its geographic integrity, and it's actually called a local community of interest. So a community of interest that may cover county-wide issues, such as water, some environmental issues, air, et cetera, don't meet that, that local geographically identifiable standard. And they're also considered contiguous populations, so as you can see, when we were looking at the location of the API, we were playing into these criteria that are actually set forth in the code. The second question was, does the community of interest get to say where they want to be, they surely can define it themselves, and, uh, and, and identify their interests, generally social, economical, cultural, et cetera. The code does not give a community of interest the right to say who they want to be in a district with, or who they do not want to be in their district, as you can see, that authority given to a community of interest would be terribly limiting on, on the discretion of the Commission, and on the, the Commission's ability to weigh in balance. Now, um, Mr. Adelson may touch on this, but there are limits to that, they don't get to say, if you have a geographic minority that is large enough to be the majority in a district, it can be a continuing violation of Section 2, to put that group, let's say it's a bare majority, in a district where their voting will still be swamped by other groups. But aside from that voting rights aspect of it, the law does not constrain you in your decisions about where to place communities of interest, once their integrity is identified and preserved. So I just wanted to make that, uh, comment, and then for, just looking forward a little bit, since we have to do a report, et cetera, it would be good to identify when we're moving areas, whether we're talking about CDPs or planning areas, et cetera, because as we saw in moving Spring Valley, it also included a very important CDP, La Presa, which came out of District 1. So it would be good to be very specific, so that if, if we end up moving only a CDP, we're able to say that we did it for this reason, but it required the division of a, of a county planning area, and once again, we're into the motion and mapping time, so be verbal, I know you are all very good at that, and talk about your rationales for the, uh, the decisions you're making along the way here. And those are my comments, thank you for the time.
Before we turn to Bruce, I just want to clarify that last point you were making on, for lack of a better term, other boundaries, planning areas, planning groups, et cetera, census blocks, I would assume, that can all be done by our demographer, we ju, you're saying we just have to make sure we document it and explain it in the final report?
Yes, and at least give, give information, if you only want a CDP moved, I don't want people to be, the Commissioners to be surprised when the report comes back and said, well, the upshot of that was to divide a planning area, so I just want to make sure we have no surprises on the night. And everybody knows, because there are bigger, it's, it's, what is it, the Russian dolls in the box, it's get bigger and bigger.
The good news on that final report remains that co-vice-chair Garcia has given up X number of hours of her life to getting that right, and we're already well on the way on that. But it's a fair point, for this entire discussion today, please keep in mind, final report aspects, take lots of notes, we can continue to document this effectively. I was about to turn to Mr. Adelson, but Commissioner Diaz?
No, just a quick, um, question about community planning areas, are we, is that in the statute?
Oh, no, 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 it isn't in the statute, but it is a geography that was identified very early on as areas that need to be taken into account, and they became ultra-important in the rural areas, because they are, there are community groups that are in charge of the planning areas, are uh, kind of like mini councils in the planning areas, and then of course, the city of San Diego planning areas are ultra-in, important with their identities. And so, no, it's not in the statute, but they are communities of interest, and that's very, very apparent in our process, some have been vocal, some not so.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because the community planning area boundaries often change and not according to, um, census.
Right, lots of lines, lots of lines to consider.
I agree.
Mr. Adelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to be with you again, I know that it can be very exciting to be closing in on the final stage of mapping, is everything is coming together, and I really uh, very much appreciate the opportunity to be with you, but also the comments about, uh, building your record, providing justifications, really, really important. Communities of interest tend to be defined. Communities of interest tend to be defined by state law, not federal law. So that as your, as California law, California customs relate to communities of interest, that's the place to go. But I just wanted to mention very quickly, and then I'm eager to, uh, answer any questions that you have and provide any additional guidance. My analysis is guided by Board of Supervisor elections, as I've said, and as, uh, we've talked about before, those are endogenous elections. Your role is you have one role essentially to draw Board of Supervisor districts. You're not drawing like state legislative districts, you're not drawing congressional districts. Those are the elections that are most dispositive, most revealing. And in your county, you have a very interesting melange of election results, if I could say that. You have one minority group may be able to elect in one district, and then in another two minority groups can elect basically candidates of choice. And as I recall, that happens in some combination in three of the five current districts. So that's a very important consideration. That's telling me the minority voters have had an opportunity to elect their preferred candidates in your supervisory districts. As you know, that one of my, uh, biggest areas of interest is District One. It's the only district in the current plan that elects one hundred percent of the time for, um, one or more minority groups. I think it's two. So that being able to retain that, to protect that right is very, very important. So I know that you've heard a lot of terminology and I'm trying to stay away from using all these ability to elect, opportunity to elect, forty-five percent probability. I, I know that gets to be confusing, but I, so I think that the, the key is, is we've talked about before, communities of interest, keeping them together, and I'm looking at it from a voting rights standpoint, minority communities that are discreet and compact, uh, Native American reservations, great example of, uh, minority communities of interest. Places that, you know, as I said last night, places like Chinatown, for example, in New York, and that certainly, uh, there are similar communities in other areas and certainly in California. So those are the big themes that I wanted to mention. I'm very cognizant of the, of your time constraints. The last point that I'd like to make is, it is very important in a district like District One, as you're trying to balance population and you're moving communities around, that you not add communities, cities, towns that may dilute or weaken minority opportunity to elect their preferred candidates. Remember, they have for essentially a one-hundred percent track record. So if you add in a community that substantially will bring down the Latino population, that is of, can be of concern, not necessarily, but it can be. So please be aware as you're moving communities that that is a consideration, particularly in a county like San Diego, where there's a substantial difference between voting age population and citizen voting age population for certainly for, uh, for Latinos. So those are, but my general overall comments, I appreciate the time and I'm very eager to, uh, help with any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Dostal.
Thank you, Chair Bane, and I've got some leaf blowers or something going on outside, so sorry, or not, I don't, but somebody has it, so I'm sorry if you can hear that. I don't know if you can. Anyway, um, my question for Bruce was about, um, District One. Um, one of the things I think we also need to be careful about is packing District One. So how, how do we analyze that? When, when do we know if we're packing District One with a Hispanic or Latino vote?
Well, that's a great point. I think that, that first look, look at the overall population and then look at the C VAP. So my rough thought would be you, you don't need a C VAP of sixty percent Latino. That has, that's, has not been true in what's called the benchmark district, and that's a term that uh, I you can use frequently. Benchmark refers to the current supervisory district. The current supervisory district does not have sixty percent Latino. There is no legally cognizant, recognizable racially polarized voting in District One. Because minority voters have elected one hundred percent of the time. Uh, at least, I believe, two of three minority groups, preferred candidates. So that's telling you this, this district is good. Minority voters can elect whom they want. Essentially, just as a rough number, if you can keep the numbers comparable to what they are now, that would be my advice. So packing would be, once you get into the C VAP range of fifty-five percent, that would be a cautionary tale. Sixty percent beyond cautionary, don't do that. Freezing the population down to closer to what it is now in the benchmark district.
Thank you, Commissioner Servant, then Commissioner Ponce.